Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we will call this special meeting of the Wood Creek City Council to order May 25th, 2022, 5:00 PM. Ask everyone to rise for a moment of silence and we do have lots of thoughts and prayers to send out today. Good. Good morning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which is stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. On the honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one man and individual. Is the city secretary, please go over.
Mayor Jeff Breton.
Here.
Mayor Procham and Laura LeBrone. Here. Councilmember G. Breton. Councilmember Chris Grummer. Here. Councilmember Deborah Hines. Here. Councilmember Brent Foley.
Here. And we have four?
Yes.
Me. All right, first order of business, public comments, and the first comment is from our own Suzanne.
One, wait, tell me again.
Oh, no, sorry, never mind. You're going seven, okay. I do have a written public comment submitted from Louis Joseph. I want to do a little drive. To states. I very definitely request that the court 20% off the total valuation of a Wood Creek home and 20% off valuation for over 65 plus and disabled sitting homestead extensions take place as soon as possible. Our Hayes County Central Prazlal District Total Property valuations are killing seniors like me who are trying to age in place without having to bear the added expenses of a retirement facility. We need the 20% financial relief and help pay for some of the unavoidable expenses we're already facing, lawn and tree maintenance, plumbing, electricians, et cetera. I think that you'll pretty much find that every other senior citizen living in Wood Creek feels the same way about this 20% off proposal. Thanks for your time and help. Thank you for your comments. All right, first, first order of business here would be asked of the consent agenda. Mayor Parkman. I move that we have the consent agenda placed into the regular agenda.
I second.
So we have a motion and second to remove the financial reports from the consent agenda and placement of the regular agenda. So we'll vote on that. Overall, please.
Councilmember Brent Foley.
Aye.
Deborah Hines. Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember G. Breton. Aye. Council, uh, sorry, Mayor Procham and Laura LeBrone.
Aye.
All right, so the consent agenda, which is entirely the financial reports for April, is the first item of our agenda. So open that for discussion. Mayor Parkman.
Governor Grummer. On page six of the packet highlighted in green for the year of 2021, Detroit, 22, this year's budget to date, the city has received a total revenue equaling 114% of the annual amount budgeted. This is a 14% surplus over expected income today. On page eight, highlighted in green, today, the city has a total expenditure equaling 45% of the annual amount budgeted. Leaving today a $467,019 in net debt. Your fiscal year runs from October 1st to September 30th. This report is for April 30th, 2022. This represents seven months into the fiscal year's budget. Seven months is approximately 60% of the total fiscal year. Today, the city has spent 45% of the original annual budget and 60% of the time frame. This leaves 55% of the original annual budget unspent and 40% of the time frame in which to spend it if council intends to spend the entire original budget amount. And even if council did spend the entire amount budgeted, it would still leave the 14% surplus of funds coming into this city unspent.
I just wanted to add that. Did I make that comment all right? If you look at the line item number 40, 35, what is the TDM grant? It's on page six. Page six also, just that was money received $213,000 that was unbudgeted. Therefore, actually, we are, the 213 I'm going to take, that could vote for, I just spent 40. The TDM grant for 213,000.
That's, that's the reason, because we're discussing the pressures and revenues. I have concerned some of the categories where we are way above, and we have some categories, fortunately, where we're below. And I think that time is coming for a hundred of them, and I would like us to review those categories where we are settling beyond what those budgets have been, will be definitely above what was presented.
Yes.
So, but again, so explain how, so that these TDM grants not making us look better than we actually are?
Yes, that it's making us look a lot better by $213,000.
So that's why, because my.
And those were restricted funds.
Okay. I reviewed without the TDM grant. That's the reason I accepted the motion is I looked at some categories where I think we started looking at, this is everything that we have done several months ago, four and a half months ago, based on, and the way that I looked at it, taking the TDM grant out is really having.
Yes, and I'll explain that what that shows is that that was actually from the, for the groundwater and where our council put the money. So it is restricted funds. We received the $212,600 and then we received a $420. So those are restricted for only water, sewer, wastewater, water.
Who can understand that we have that? But I think, first of all, legal expenses are, I know that there's a special, we need to start looking at managing the legal expenses because they are definitely, in each week we can say definitely way above what we anticipated, and I know that there was some things that we did not anticipate, but we need, for the budget of end. I'm looking at, first of all, I feel very strongly that whatever budget of end this year, whatever we give, that we do not necessarily show. This is critical as we move into a, if we move into the plans of comprehensive plan, particularly also the citizens' wishes to draw to improve our infrastructure, and if we have to do any kind of financial grant trend, whether it be a loan or a tax count, we are breaking and not going to go on current areas or any of those things. I think the council will pass.
I have a question. This is through April, end of April, correct?
Yes.
And the utilities attorney bills have not been paid?
They have, the first one went out in the first part of May, the second one went out in.
So that.
That's not reflected, that's not reflected.
So that watch figure is not included.
That's right. So basically, when you take out that money, we are $114,000. Our revenues are under our expenses right now.
Wait, okay, so if you take our revenues minus our total expenditures for the year, we still have a surplus?
Right, but in the budget, when it comes to budget costs, right now, we are still at $168,000. And if you look, the majority of our revenue has already been.
So, sales taxes fluctuating, ad form is way off, so what is the problem with ad form?
Basically, it's the follow-up because we still receive plenty of money from here. But we have received a majority of it right now. And so we will say, let's go back to, and we did receive another.
So essentially, the previous council over budgeted.
No. Let me.
Because we have not even spent close to the amount predicted to be spent. Yeah, we'll end with the.
Well, no, we did not have a, we did not have over budgeted. In fact, we got a balanced budget because the budget was at 20% of the number of production. We have expectations that have not been met. For example, we have $20,000 that were dedicated that are still there, which we prepared. We have $30,000 for plant maintenance that are still showing in our credit sheet that here we are almost at 230,000 to the fiscal year activity cost. We have not received work for COSAC, but we don't know. And even if we were to receive work for COSAC, this is one area that we'll get, so the categories. I think that one area, for example, we look at, I look at the engineering services, engineering services at 144% of the anticipated budget. So if anything, we underestimate the insurance, we didn't have confidence, and I think there's a lot of cases. And then I look at community relations. We found that community relations with an expectation of $6,000. We have spent $1,600, $37,000. And I think that that's one area where we need to use that money with community relations. And I'm looking at, we do have the land beach workshop coming up, the state driving campaign, any other opportunities that comes up, national night out. But probably, and vehicle is at 96%. And I, I travel every day to weigh this. But what I would like to get away is that we get, we get to do a budget, and it is maybe necessary for that, this is a recommendation to Mayor, that could be a special meeting that we work on.
We're, and let me talk about some of the parking things. With the receipts that we received this month, we are at $80,000 less than walking budget. Right now, we've got $340,000, $464,000. And what we could say later, because we are, basically, our collect, sales tax, yeah, we backed that one up, actually made it less. But, but revenue, I think it was mainly, was much in the last year compared to this year. A lot of our expenses, our revenue, have gone down because this, this year, we are $5,000 with the construction, and we were, we were well, well, right.
Well, I'd like to say a few things. First off, as our law still allows for likely to see that reduction, we are going to need capacity eventually, and we are already nearing it. So that is happening. We do have more of them coming in now. On the sales tax, beginning this summer month, this is when people get really active again, so we could see more income there. If you remove the restricted grant, the TDM, minus 40, 35, from the total net revenue on this current budget, these current expenditures, we still have $213,000 plus, so $998 in net revenue. And so I'm not seeing the same projection of deficit that, and I'm not, and I'm not saying I'm not concerned about it, but right now, we are still sitting at three, even removing those restricted funds. And so I just want that to be clear. The other thing, I think, when we talked about the legal pieces in the previous meetings, we decided to remove out the elected body of people and separate those, those which are only sitting at, they're under $3,000. So when we're talking about excessive people, how much of that is actually negotiable at this point? Because this city relies on our city to try and represent us in legal pieces and some of that outside of our control. I mean, you know, what point are we talking about an item that we can't negotiate upon? Or what can we even talk about in the city about that? Because that's certainly not peace from the elected body, it must have been separated out.
Those were separated out, and you know, asking for these separated out, but not asked, the city attorney is separated out, anything from October 1 of the regular question.
So this budget is announced.
It was, the budget is at the point where when, when the question, the city attorney start breaking it out. So when you look at the total 21 back, that is, the attorney was not requested to break out the required of, or whatever fund that was, so the 21 back, it included all legal pieces.
And the reason that we would vote in, not only other requests of the attorney, is that when it was category, there were, for example, there was some side counsel that was explicitly listed on that we worked in the franchise agreement with, and those expenses are not generally for those expenses. So in play, it appeared that the reason particularly concerning where expenses would be of other services from being dealt with there. So we, this is probably the goal, to break down the legal services, depending on the type of service that was given to the life, whether it is combination, whether it is that a general counsel, a general counsel, or special.
And I just, tell me, tell me what you want to tell, on the, on the, on the present.
So those happened for three months. It was in February that it has budget amendment, and it was in that same meeting that we just started breaking them out. So in three months, elected body has spent less than $3,000 on that to be noted.
I don't know what I'm saying, that you want me to go back to just your budget, and maybe we need to force break down of the special classes or lack.
Yeah. I don't think you want to pay for that.
I know.
Thank you, Buck. Before I break up, we don't want, we want to make that, if you want to know where your money is going, please, I mean, clearly, and please, those public entities, that's the way that, I just break down this thing. So if that can be done, the council, the guys who work with the, and finally, over the.
I'm, I'm, this is, that's, it was, like, the last, the, the, you have it now, and things separated, there was a stopping point, and it sort of all bumped it here. And then, folks, go forward, I mean, the first year, balance out, and both of that went down. And then, you know, next year, we'll budget accordingly, and do a little more of that closer. But I do think it's a little question asked, a little call deal, that forces to bring it up, reallocate, you know, within the, of the county, people that could, whenever they need to do that. Now, we, we're still the same money, allocate it out, go back over to the festival, wanted to get this, get it out of, by all.
I mean, let's hope that we write the administrative chapter as our existing code, and so that's a very important portion of the code, and I appreciate those, because I can feel well being.
I can tell you that from October 1 to the present, if I were to point off the top of my head, and remember on what I've done with this council, that, you know, there was, from one of his, like, the judge's body, I would say that it's been more, I'd say, from October 1 to 40, that's questionable. Although, I'm, 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 when we admit, it changes if the, in the end, of, of, I don't know. I'm reading this right down, we were at 40% of budget, and this is now, I'm, right? I mean, as, as, because I can put that down, we've got a couple of, you know, bills from our, for work on the franchise agreement, and those, that number, once we, the, the, because, it is something that, one, obviously, surprise on the budget, and the, I, I, I focus out, out of this, really.
What is the estimate on those bills? Or do we have a line item to look at in regards to those upcoming expenditures and what they're projected out?
For legal? Special case? Yes, the cases.
The utility items, that, that, I also remember, I had mentioned our hard bills coming up, that have not been paid.
In the month of May, I'm struggling there. Isn't that all? I'm looking at, okay, so for legal, special cases. About $30,000, those are booked in, right?
Okay. That's a total budget for the year. That we will be over that budget. Given. Not in charge. Or acquisition of office.
All right, okay.
So, that is the utility bill, we're talking about their $100 bill. I just wanted to be clear, it was first, as if there were city utility bills, franchise agreement, but this is pertaining to expected people.
Yes. And I prefer we have that, actually, do that, officially, those special. For the decision. So. Yes. What's, what's, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember G. Breton. Mayor Procham and Laura LeBrone. Councilmember Brent Foley.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
And so, the approval, the item number two, regulars, if they don't discuss a favor of reaction on approving the, 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 the results, considering things to be taken for the city, capital, first, with updates, planning with possible action on the inclusion of toll from pressure.
As, as.
I second. That it is, the council, the, the, the.
Yeah, so first, just kind of review the results. Essentially, the EBA results showed that our citizens preferred a bond election for the combination of taxes and bond. Second, they were split fairly 50/50 on raising taxes are not, with raising taxes that took quite, since the widely referred, they asked that they address some health and plumbing measures, specifically targeted at speed, tables, cushion, road striping, and we, we are straightened and act by three expenses that we highest rated choices. They did say it was important for jobs to be created, but to use federal funds to deal with their projects. They would like us to, 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 to. I also provided you all with an overview of how I validated these results. I spent hours looking at each, at every single result, and attached ID address to that result, and where that came in the country, world. It was extensive. I felt very confident in these results. If you turn it to page 28, there is a review there of how I validated this inventory, and it talks about percentage of entries that go to concern. There were only 11 and 30 responses within the data themselves, and probably 6% margin of error, based on the local numbers. Given the fact that 75% responses originated directly from this local community and specifically comes from, it is 43% of, I'm pretty confident in these results. I can provide anyone with more information on what you did, that if you would like to scroll back up, your agenda packet on page. On page 10, I address widely contrasting results to be indicative of the larger bodies that everyone in Wood Creek projects with this survey. These results have an average rating of somewhere between around 90%. 90% of the time, responses were near result, 10% probability of winning and a marginal mirror, 5%. I know it's really hard to understand the stuff we're talking about, but essentially, margin of error talks about how much variance the population has from a whole population, if everybody voted, these results themselves would only be about 5% off. The confidence is the likelihood that these results would be, I think, the results of the survey, that the whole population is good. And then we get to the sample size, but when you're doing this, if you're sample, you have many responses you need, so confident, based on the total population. So those numbers, 30, 35, 36, are all these numbers of responses, we would have needed a sample, to feel confident, based on the population size. So we had 9,200 residents, we would need 39, 49, if we have 800 residents, we need 47, and if we have 7,500, we need 47. I use all of those numbers on purpose, because it is hard to accurately, where our population falls on, where, and we're still waiting for something to happen. So, we always have, there's always a margin of error, and if we were to get this survey, every school person, every school person turned in, there would still be potential issues with the survey, but we can be very confident in, in these results, and that they are, you know, representing a majority of our citizens, and that we are fairly accurate in that.
I suppose. I was, I was, I was, I was. Good news.
Is that, well, I think, especially given that this is the first time our city has been distributing monkey, you know, there was a lot of new variables for, overall, I feel really bad about it. The comments are always really interesting, and I wonder if they all are best, if they are published now, and a lot of help, but permission, and they're always, comments should be read and not ignored. But definitely, I want to encourage everybody to, I, I'm using those.
I'd like to point out the name, 20% margin of error, and 20% of error, IP addresses outside of the Beverly Valley area, that's 30%.
Yeah, so when we talk about IP addresses outside of the Beverly Valley. Yeah, so, um, when we talk about IP addresses outside of the Merle Valley area, we have to primarily hit any of the areas. So we're talking about who worked in Austin, who worked in Ontario, um, someone who works in San Marcos in particular. Um, now, now, therefore, response is coming from ahead. District who has been visiting Tampa.
Oh, if they, they change their, their family.
Well, Tampa, the area, right, because there was, the tower in Houston area. District who has been, I know that you two were in Arkansas during the time of this survey, if you took your survey in Arkansas, which I think no one did. Yeah, um, so, these are likely not the issue, really. Because that's why I would do a drop back to the, the margin of error. Because I also, I didn't just look at the IP addresses for where they were, I scrolled further down and looked at the actual survey itself, apparently. So when you looked at the survey itself, any of that records were there? Where they should, with Al Woodbury, their bill, for example, uh, you know, had very, we have comments, those are. That person obviously lives very, very near. And, um, the survey, I thought was, from our home, like we found it. For example, District Davenport is in Cairo. You know, if District Davenport decided to take the survey while in Cairo, this result is valid. And so, um, I, I don't know that there is a large construction, because I would gather is, that, 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 that worked in Austin. So that part, that, House support district, IP address, it's quite. So, um, and the, either, these solid results. I did, however, find, um, some of this, this is a, uh, it looked like when they tied the address, looked at it, it was three, it was three times. And each time it's, it's quite a thing, they were under a, and those responses all supported tax note and not raising tax. And I discussed that, so there's only trending in for those. And we left them out of respect, or there's no way to, unless we wound up in that. Um, at that point, you have the margin, that's why you understand that the rest of your results will never be the other person's. And somebody changed their mind to, to the survey. Two weeks ago, I had learned something new and how to, how to, how to, how to, that's always, you did, right, survey. This is an informative document, that's helping me educate and position, and there was some, great job, I thought, like, it's not, we're a profit rate. Structured, and now we take a vote today, I have.
Good. Um, I just want to thank you for, oh, another, another survey in my life. Um, that, uh, that, yeah, there are, there are, I don't know, but rarely does anybody go in and see this, this, uh, kind of inside of, or, you know, or close to that. Um, we get to the, the real answer here, uh, that, that, have, go, and, and, whether it's out there, or, or to, period of, things, or, or, groups panel, they, uh, just, I just like to ask, uh, the, uh, uh, item, uh, group, uh, hopefully, they, they, that will, motion. You can throw that.
Yeah, so, um, I, that's, and, um, the, one, actually, it should go to the, 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 since they are helping to support, they plan for college. Now, I, to wind it up, I have other possibilities that, that, that is, kind of, like, issue, so, uh, first.
They had to. We don't know and we don't. I'm kidding. It was really significant the scale of error that were. I would be. Large number of. Bill. On this one, even if, even if all of this was very large. Another. Question. Is still. Right. Of course. Bill says. He says, like. That's. Also the. The counsel thinks. That they went away. You know, and. Was that what they were? The court is going.
If you look at. About that. If you look at the. I think that's a question. I don't. I don't know. So I. Kind of wrote the question. Because. I come to pro-synesthesia. And. Part of the. And he goes, yes, they want. The many. Prayers. But. I want to go over them on Friday. So. That's how I wrote that.
And I think this, I think this is true. By the. Of course. We did. Just. Pull all this together and make. Uh. This is gonna be very important. But. Got the data. I think.
This. I saw the fact that by support of motion. And this would be. This would be.
So. There's. A whole.
I. But. But. I want. But. So. Did you want to discuss this? I know we need to put it on the. And I would like to know that these. Scott was actually. Um. Brought down. Couple members. Well, so. Uh. If you have any questions about ideas or something like that. If you would like more information on that. Thing. Counsel does all of that. Um. So. One. So. To respond to the court, court, court. The federal. High school. And they did not. Met anything. On. They. On that. So they weren't even part of the. That response that really together on. Uh. But I mean, again. You heard. Go back to how we understand. Will it be a result? We will. Have some. Questions. Whole. Responses. Together. So some of the other part of. The great. Curly response is all of the questions. Um. Responses were very. The. You know, they didn't go in. They didn't. So. No question.
I'll. I. Yeah, I just. I'm not. Exactly.
I can't. Clear on the question. Okay, with the. My. My. I am. Number one. Under the recognition. Yes, ma'am. So two of the. Alright. Uh. Well, Paul. President. Hi. Your pro channel one. Hi. Counsel member Brett Colleen.
Hi.
Counsel member Del Hine. Um. And counsel member Chris Druck.
Hi.
I believe that's it. And.
If. I think it might be kind of nebulous. But I would. Taking that through and. The public might want to. Call the. Works. It would potentially hold. Now, or either. Some other informative pressure. And it actually. All. Lots of panel. It's going. I see.
Definitely. I'd like. Just. Sense of. And. This. Formally. Part of. Her. That. This. But. That.
I would like to admit. Her motion. As. That was. And. Counsel. With a timeline.
Or.
Okay. Okay. So I would like to. If the question of public panel. How do you counsel? With a timeline? And. Next.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, cool. Those. Basically. There's. That. The. That. Very well.
Your pro channel. Well, Brett. Hi. Counsel member Brett Colleen. Counsel member Del Hine. Hi. Counsel member Chris Druck.
Right.
Counsel member. First. Hi.
Very much. And then move on. So I would. Just. Correct six step. Everybody here. Is. But. The. And it takes. More water. For. Water. They'll. Very.
Thank you. I'll be. There's. So. Yeah. I thought. That. I want. Any motion. I'm. I just. At. I'm not sure. Uh. For the. Time. Is. Then I. Stop. Why this is. To begin the process. Was. This. They. And. We give. Power. And. And. How we. Do this.
So. Are the. This. This. That.
Yes.
That's. Because I come. Really.
Um. One of the things that. Would be. Four. Probably. I knew. On the. Most. This. Three. And. I think those most. Who are down. Contact. Based on. That. You know, they. They. Tell me. With. Many. Houses. That show that. I would. Want to hear. I. Is. The. Class. Obviously. When. Close this out. We have. The. That's. Fifty percent. Off. That's our. Part. Of. The area. That. We're. We have. My. I didn't. That this base. Financial. Causes. Health. And here. Uh. I think that. Captain. They will be that. And. Happy. They may be. We. At this point. And I think that. Possibly. Will. Upon. There. And. What if. Any. Actually. Twenty plus years. Are hearing. Is that. This. I would like. Then. I would. And. And then. Come back. Counsel. With. Final.
Okay. I'll.
I have a question. Before I start. Go on that. Now. It is. The counsel is. Which. Is.
Ready. Ready. Yeah. There. Always. Your.
And those. You're. Loving.
But. Started this. There.
Okay. So. Thank you. Studying.
Twelve. Two. Players. So what we're saying. They're. There's.
If I. You think. There. I. Yesterday. I was. He called. I. I. This. We. There. So. Let me. Say. Counsel. And there. They. And. They. And. They do. Trying. Actually. These. Four. Two. They're more. But I feel. Very. This. You. Have. This. Yeah. Well. We. I think. Good. Probably. I. I don't. I don't. Know that. Uh. So I have a. I think that. That's. What is. Public. On record. Have this. Uh. So what is the. My.
You have to. I'll take. Uh. This. More.
Okay.
Yes. This. Well.
Well. It's. I will. Uh. And I understand. Are those. Why. Uh. Here is. The way. You. Hold those. This. Buddy. For other. They would. Like the. Based on. Cost. Okay. Um. And so are these. We. The. Probably. We. Try. We. Hold. Right. Some type of. I.
The one. Uh. I want. We. Create. The. Your. I think. Us. We. Any rate. But it actually. Walked. Good. And no accident. Uh. And it does. There is. Right. That's. My. Uh. There is also. Yeah. About. Uh. Also. On. The. And. Other. Right. All. Whatever. And we did not find one. Actually. Yes. And basically. Like. That. That area. Right now. The. Is. Act. Those. Were. Uh. It's. On. Right. Uh. On. And. And. Uh. Always. Around. Part. That. That. What is. Down. Part of. But that's one. We. They. Both. Those.
Yes. Uh. In the report. There's not. The. What is. There's. So in all of this. Still. How. Is. Life. Period. So how are we able to establish. Pop. That would be.
That would be. What people have. Uh. What. Uh. What. This. That. Of. The.
And that was. Question. Is actually. About these. For how. Is that. The. Other. That we. Are. Not. Motion. And. General. Case. All.
The. Talks about. Water. Voice. Water. Water. And. Uh. All their. This. Uh. Water. Uh. We. Thanks. For. Water. That's. Today. Water. That's. More water. Right area. Rest. Both. One is. Five. There. That's. That we have. Talk about. She. So. The. And. And. Uh. So. So. I just.
So we have. Captain.
We.
Right. Ask. Question. Is that. Is there any legal issues. In. Could these. Puns be used? That's.
You. They listen. Uh. It is. Five. Five fifty eight. We. Horrible. All. Don't. Like. On. The. Right.
Pretty. Love. I know. All. Have you.
I'm feeling.
Uh huh. Good. Thank you.
It's. Four. Are these. Over.
Did you hear.
Yep. Couple of days. And. Yeah. It was. Now.
That's.
What. Also.
Right.
That's. I don't.
Okay. I have to say. They don't. Really. They also. Good.
Really. Yeah. Yeah.
In the last.
Yeah. I'm gonna. Follow. That. Five.
So that. I'm.
Yeah. Sure. Three. When that. Did.
I think. All. It's. Right. And. Really. They not. Hold up. Yeah. Not. That. Work. And that would. Probably.
I lose.
Oh, yeah.
You.
Right. Probably. I think. So that. Part of that. Cars. That. Oh, yeah. Well. It's.
I. Yeah.
I say. Say this by. Um, so. There's. Well, over. And it's. Possibly. Also. And then on purpose. Are. Sorry. This. Are. Already just. So. Highway. Area. The areas. Where. Really. I thought. Channels. Um, that's the chances. First, the other. Because. Uh. The time. Preparers. Artists. Is. Right. Hold them within areas. Um, obviously. For the. Edition. We. Need. On that. So. So. City. Um. Look. Background. Artists. That was. Has. I will share. What. To. Should. Early. Here. Twenty. Twenty. Six. And as. Uh. There is another. And. There's. Time. You can. Funny is. Have. Perhaps. I. And either. Get. It. Credit. On the. Uh. Those. And. Now. Take. The. Of. Right. Current. Cut.
An analysis of alternative roadway designs or other uses of the right of way. The effect of the removal retrofit or mitigation on the mobility of regular people. The effect of the removal retrofit or mitigation on the safety of travel in public. The cost to restore community connectivity and to convert. A facility to a different roadway design or use. Anticipated economic impact or any economic development opportunities, environmental impacts. Of retaining or reconstructing the facility, public engagement activities. Um, transportation planning activities, et cetera. Um. So this is just a sample of what you have stopped. From is available, and that's why I would hope to send it again to the Rose Panel. But on this one possibly have the city manager or the city staff assist. And now I have a question for the same. Sure. Um. Do we hire an outside firm to do our grant?
If there's all the size of the grant. We do not hire them. We we actually contract with them. And if we are funded through the grant, that's when they get funded. Do we have the name of this firm? Gary Troyler and Associates, Tyler, Texas. And I've been in contact with Wesley Troyler, who is at Austin. And he's leading all this, or he's researching.
Great, thank you. So we're already moving on this. But this way, the packet can go to, um, the Rose Panel.
Well, and I do think that, and I'll get to the council member's point in this thing, I think that, you know, if the the Rose Panel understands that there is professional assistance. You know, that will help with this, and it's not up to them to do the grant planning and find people.
Yes.
I think, yes. We're inviting that's the whole there.
Yeah.
Councilmember's calling.
I'm just going to ask, is this, uh, does textile have grants as well? And it looks like that's in your package. Um.
It's.
It's. But it's the US. Okay.
There's, uh, I think that we were talking. There. The Department of Texas. The US Department of Transportation provides funding to textile for some of these grants. So if you there's an opportunity to apply to the work to textile, there are other grants that US Department of Transportation at this time, they're doing, they're they're very active this summer. And we have been getting our information from the National League of Cities. And there's a number of, um, I started to look at this when as far as the, when the. Thinking of long range and the things that we're looking at with the comprehensive physical system for the comprehensive plan. And as well as the. Uh. That's in any creation of the platform in town. There are a number of, uh, grants that talk about safety. Uh, focusing the visa from USD dot. And also, um, mobility for pedestrian mobility. They're very focused on pedestrian mobility. There are some that are. A size of city and a type of city that special may not be, uh, eligible for, but they're worth reviewing. And when we met yesterday with the panel, I told them, I said, you know, we're going to be talking about funding and we need to look at. Uh. From opportunities for funding that we may not have considered in the past. So they are prepared.
Right now. I'm just going to very much or formalize my motion.
That's okay.
Okay. Um, I moved that the Platinum Roads Panel work with city staff. In further researching and putting together grant application packages for the US spots. Second.
I'm second.
Um, Mayor. Councilmember Hines.
Um. I had a question about the the gentlemen that are already working on researching this for us. Do you have any sort of timeline from them? Because, you know, sometimes we. Kind of ask for people to look into things and then it can be.
Actually, we were trying to get together last week because of his schedule. Uh, we had two days selected and he wasn't able to meet those days. So I am in constant contact with him and but, yeah, he just meets other clients.
Okay, so, um, I would like to request that we create a timeline for that in hoping to understand the the pressing. You know, immediacy of this issue for our city with them in particular, so that they understand that the Platinum Panel is a body that works for a temporary point in time and that they have a very specific job and that. You know, we're looking at bond elections potentially or issuing tax notes. So, you know, and all of this stuff is, so, you know, we need, we need that information from them quickly.
Sure. Could we also, once you do have any confirmation of whether there's a meeting scheduled or not, could you send that to all the council members as well? Thank you.
I I think with talking about the timeline, what is critical is to understand there's a timeline in the, um, from both. From the Department, US Department of Transportation. There's a clear timeline for some of these grants that we have mentioned on when they're going, when they're posted and when they expect to have. Uh, how long it will be. And in fact, some are active already. So it's, it's, yes, there's, uh, when we meet the ground, it's important they understand that these are some of the grants that we would like to look at.
I think that's the thing that we're going to time.
Yeah.
All right, um, we call it all this. Further discussion.
Mayor Procham, Aurora Run.
Aye.
Councilmember G D Brezene.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummet.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Brent Fuller.
Aye. Thank you. That's the number six. We'll do lots of number five.
Um. I see the the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Board is here. We talked briefly this afternoon. Uh. I've. Put this item on the agenda based on my familiarity with the LCRA and having received grants from the LCRA for our final one C three. And pretty significant grant. And they have just, uh, we started the process of, uh, the opportunity to apply to the LCRA things twice a year. The next opportunity is July first. Uh, through, um, July first, the grant is open to be for the submission statement of July, uh, thirty first. And they grants have a maximum of fifty thousand dollars. And I would like, uh, my recommendation, which I'd like to make as a motion, is, uh, the request that the Parks and Recreation Board, working with their council member liaison, Mr. Grummer. Uh, we consider preparing a proposal for a grant application to the LCRA, Community Development Partnership Program. And this, I suggested, you know, deadline is July thirteen, twenty twenty two, which would give council an opportunity to review and still submit the grant. That's what the decision is, on July third.
One second.
What was the date? He said July thirteenth?
Yeah.
July fifteenth is our meeting. And I figured that they could bring a draft that that formed and maybe should both.
So they're submitting the grant to council by July thirteenth?
Their proposed, their proposal to council by July fifteenth, and if council approves, they should make the rest of the arrangement after each other. No later than midnight, July thirteenth.
All right. The question is second, if there's a question, if there's a report? No.
Okay. Councilmember G Brezene.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummet.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Brent Fuller.
Aye.
Mayor Procham, Aurora, Aurora La Run.
Aye.
Well, thank you very much. Any of those last three items. Um. Makes it, I don't see great news if all three of them make it. It'd be wonderful news. Um, item number six is to discuss take appropriate action on adding, removing, or changing traffic signs in the city of Wood Creek, Texas. Councilmember Grummer.
No business. Second. Mayor, may I?
Just.
So this one, I'm going to ask everyone to kind of pay attention because I'm going through parts of the packet. It's a big packet, but there's only sections that I kind of want you to focus on. Um, but this is instigated by citizens, asking that the city create a three-way stop at the intersection of Brook Hollow and Augusta Lane, which is shown on the image labeled number one on page forty one in the packet.
Brook Hollow and I guess the drive.
Drive.
Sorry. Yeah.
Yes. They don't pay their points. Um. This is also, this particular specific intersection and the request for through this document is also mentioned in the open comment section of the comprehensive plan survey results. Um, I took this citizen's request and expanded upon it to allow council to consider other intersections in the city if they so wish. Those are also here in the packet. But then I pivoted to a different idea regarding traffic signs that could be more of an announcement to the city's speed limit of twenty five miles per hour at all the roads leading into the city. Images six and seven on pages forty six and forty seven. Showed two of such locations with blue dots. The possible locations for signs for, um, for entering into the city. Would be, uh, the main entrance off of swell onto Wood Creek. Um, coming up from the low water crossing on Wood Creek. Brook Meadow off of twelve. La Roca Lane off of Jacob's Well. Um, we, there's a couple of big images got removed from the packet. So you don't see those, but those are the ones I'm taking. These are all the roads that come into the city. So on page forty eight in the packet. On the lower right corner, I did a mockup of a possible sign announcing to drivers coming into our city, the maximum speed limit. It could have a yellow ground with black letter skating, entering residential community, maximum speed limit twenty five miles per hour.
So the additions you're proposing are the designation that you're entering a residential community because I I think. Because I, I think I'm seeing, seeing energy Lewis, uh, that speed limit signs might exist, some of these entrances are ready, maybe not the exact spot that you're talking about, or is close to the entrance? So that's, that's the difference that you're, you're proposing is that they're even closer to the entrances and that they, uh, also designate you're entering a residential zone and maybe, um, are, are more alerting to the eye than the standard speed.
And that's why I also included in the packet, there's, um, sample signs in the data section, which that we can do flashing, I don't know that we wouldn't. But the fact that we changed it to a yellow background, which is what also we're allowing, that's right in the big packet, you'll see that, where our standard signs for speed limit are white on black. Um, possibly have, there's actually an option for blue as well, but I think blue would just kind of disappear, but I'll leave that.
My girl, can I take something? Cause usually yellow signs are suggested, they suggest they're not regulatory, so the white signs aren't regulatory.
If you have.
I was just thinking with attention getting versus a regular sign.
But if you have a speed limit sign, and I learned this from, if you have it of the constable and from interpreting at the court. If you, you're a law enforcement, cannot, if you have the sheriff patrol, if you have a speed limit on a background, yellow background is advisory. So the only action the law enforcement agency, the agent can take is to advise or cite. So you cannot put fines. So it's, so it's like, that's why we're doing the road. You see the white sign that says 55 and then you go into a curve. There's the yellow sign that says 45, that's advisory.
Okay, um, I, I think to draw attention, uh, cause I, I, I think we're getting stuck on the advisory thing and I think we've clarified that. But if you look at page 48 in some of the samples that he submitted, you have, uh, a combination of the white mandatory sign with the, uh, brighter yellow residential designations and slows. So I, I don't want to get distracted on those semantics away from the point that we're considering would be to potentially move them forward, towards the entrances and, and add residential designations or reminders. Because this is one of, the reason why this interests me in particular is because when it comes to traffic calming and looking at the research about appropriate traffic calming measures, one of the things that pops often is, uh, making your entrances more engaging and, um, alerting that you are entering a residential area. So signage like this, improving our green spaces, building them up, um, you know, really amplifying that would satisfy some of the residential requests for traffic calming as well. So this idea was interesting to me. Um, I also had residents ask me about stop signs. I know this has been a, a project that we have worked on, the mayor and I, at one point. We even drafted a potential ordinance, um, about additional signage in the neighborhood for, for speed control. Uh, so I just, I, I wanted to clarify that point that we, we could still potentially add signs, move signs. But it just, you know, removing that yellowness of the speed would be.
So I still, the yellow is a very strong attention getting colors from our theory. Uh, yellow is the most, the color that projects the furthest in distance.
I.
Um, but also, but to get beyond the color, um, I'm not, also I noticed that sometimes we have signs when you enter into the city that are fairly close in, like you can hear, actually in the process of turning. So you're not really seeing the sign. That's why there's a little bit of an idea of stepping it into the city a little bit. That's, that's why these dots, well, again, some of the pages got through. But, um, for instance, when you come up the hill from the low water crossing, is basically when you're kind of just entering, there's not a stop sign there, but it's a great location for, hey, we're now entering the city from the low water crossing.
Yes.
And then it's announcing, and this is our speed limit here.
And, and those, those are, are right through, you could do any color you want, that would be.
Yeah.
Is the.
And we can add them to existing sign looking like 25 speed limit signs over these. We have one, a stop sign at La Roca. We could have.
We don't have a stop sign on La Roca. The golf course says it, the golf course says the stop sign on La Roca.
I'm very sorry. I, I do have a question. Would we need an ordinance to install other signs or is that just stop?
Any regulatory sign has to have, so stop yield.
Yeah, okay. Um, I think, okay, so the motion was to, uh, consider any of these signs, right? And you started with stop signs and now we're talking speed signs. Are we trying to set these today?
No.
Cause there's no, we don't have an ordinance, correct?
No, my goal is just to present to council what the citizens asked for. Uh, let us discuss and consider. In the document though, I'm gonna go back to my own notes.
Yeah, but I, while you're going back to your notes, I mean, one of the things that would really help for me is to have, and I can't remember the acronym, for the uni- universal traffic codes, but having that in, information in there was really helpful. And we highlighted a few areas that are, that are potent here. Um, you know, I've looked at it and said, okay, well, you know, it's like, there should be some question in some of those areas, um, whether like a stop sign would be appropriate. Um, and it, and it clearly says, well, if an engineering study determines it. So, you know, part of, part of my thinking on this is to be, yeah, I mean, I think we can do some things with signage. They very clearly say you don't use stop signs as traffic calming. Um, so they're. Speed control, traffic calming, so it's, it's, um, you know, so it's like, like, and I understand that because you get there, you slow down, you don't really stop and then you haul.
Yeah.
You step on it after you pass the sign, so, uh, so they can actually, uh, be worse for that than, than helpful. So I understand that. Um, and I, 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 I feel really bad about sending things to the Platinum Panel, but you know, that's one of the things that, that's one of the things that they're looking at is overall traffic safety and working with our engineers, you know, to look at, uh, at our roadways, at traffic calming and, and other safety issues. And we could conceivably ask for some engineering study on, on key areas that have been pinpointed here and see what works.
Just to bring it back to some of this funding that we've spoken about in this agenda. Um, some of the funding can actually go to those kind of studies.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that's.
Mayor, uh, Mayor. Not yet. And Councilmember calling?
I, I was just gonna say, I, if, if we do send this to the Platinum Panel, I think we need to be careful with, with wordage. Because what I'm looking at is engineering judgment should be used to establish intersection control limit, which lays out five factors like, you know, traffic volume, number and angle of approaches, approach speed, site distance, crash experience, those are the factors. I don't, I don't think this says where you have to have an engineering study. It's just these engineering judgments that you make when you make that decision. Because fewer than a bar that's spending money on a study for stop sign, you know, so I, I think, Paul, can you?
This is an issue.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hines, did you have?
No.
Oh, so I, I noticed, I went through our, uh, finances recently and I, I noticed it cost $320 for us to install the sign in Augusta, so just thought that was irrelevant sort of thing to consider when we're talking about installing more signs. Yeah, and that was just for the actual installation and we're not even talking about the cost of purchasing these signs yet. So I just wanted to have that on record, but then the other thing I, I, I looked over right by the golf course entrance. And right now there is a three-way stop there. And so I don't know how that one was justified or put into place or what the, the reasoning there. But I just wanted to point out that we do have one within our city limits already. And so it would not be, okay, I'm just, that is one right next to my house. That is one where, yeah, people, that part of the road does see a lot of speeding. There isn't necessarily, certainly a line side issue. I don't know the reason why it got installed there, but I just wanted to point out that we, you know, there, there is not a large amount of traffic coming in and out of the golf course. You know what I mean? It seems like it's a three-way stop sign, but it's, the justification is nebulous in my opinion. So, but I just, you know, I felt like it was worth mentioning. I don't know where the other ones are off the top of my head, I can't remember, so.
It hasn't always been nebulous because there used to be big golf tournaments and the exiting was a problem back in the seventies and eighties when there were big golf tournaments.
And probably people weren't looking as much at the universal codes.
Oh.
And the kind of issue of the statements when they're, when the signs are.
So it's. One again.
Yeah, but there are, there are, there are instances of, of three-way stops that are, that are, that are like that. I mean, it's like, like, if you look at, uh, uh, Augusta Drive at Brook Hollow on the, um, north end. Um, you know, part of this north end where Brook Hollow dead ends and, uh, and there's, there are some, some sites. I mean, there, there, I think good justification for a three-way stop sign or three-way stop there. But I would like to have Aprils or whoever we use, um, sit down and discuss that and go look at it together. Uh, but that, you know, it's like, there, there's, there's a lot of, um, there, there's, there's room for, for give on some of those things. And it's, Councilmember Foley says, you know, some of it is, is an engineering judgment rather than the result of a, you know, $30,000 engineering study.
And just also to, to jump on to that, we have, um, this, this study can determine additional safety measures that are required at intersections such as concerning pedestrians, bicyclists and all road users. So it doesn't have to specifically be talking about speed, it could be talking about, you know, people walking down these states.
And then one of the things that we've been talking about since we first were in negotiation with Aprils is that, you know, if you're looking at our roads and, and how to improve them, what to do. Um, we want you to be thinking in terms of, of safety, um, of pedestrians and others when you were designing, you know, those plans, those projects. Um, and we've been very adamant about that. I don't think that, I don't think that it got through on the Wood Creek project. Um, but any other work that's done, it, it, I, I just personally see that it is.
So do we have a direction? Can we state the direction that we're going?
I would like to move that we, um, send a condensed version of this. Councilmember Grummet, prepare to the Platinum Panel with the request that they consider additional signage for safety, pedestrian notifications, and improving our entrances to improve, uh, reduction of speed.
One second. Second, but Councilmember Foley?
Uh, we meet next June 16th, when anybody, June 16th or 30th is the next meeting of Platinum Panel. In case.
We're gonna keep it busy.
Do we, do we need to add consult engineer or is that?
Well, that's what I was trying to ask.
I, I think that you should request that the engineering firm, uh, give us a scope of work and the cost for that. So the council can accept that and know what their actual cost will be.
I think.
That's, that's a good.
I think, that's good.
So, I think, I, I think so you're solving for X because the transportation code requires that it places that rule by, she gotta do it consistent with the transportation code essentially. And so until the engineering firm knows what the city is envisioning, it, it's gonna be tough to set things that this is gonna be consistent with what the transportation code requires. And then, I mean, ultimately, there's, there's some overlap there, so we, if you want to set forth your wish list and then ship it off.
So I think I'll leave the motion as it stands and with the idea that the Platinum Panel would issue recommendations and then we approach the, the engineering firm or.
Will you, will you repeat the motion please?
Uh, I moved that we, that we send a condensed packet prepared by Councilmember Grummer to the Platinum Panel to address additional signs for traffic, safety, pedestrian mobility, and improving our entrances to reduce speed.
And make a recommendation to council.
And then to add, make a recommendation back to council.
I'm sorry, the amendment?
It's not amended, she read her motion again.
But she.
She added.
No, she added.
What did she add?
To recommend back to council, I missed that apparently.
Okay, I thought that was sort of given. All right, so, so we will vote on the amendment to have, to tell the Lisa. Okay.
And, and that addresses what this was. Um, city, city authority said, the Platinum Panel is going to include in his recommendation, if, you know, various steps and how to do that. So that, that's not part of.
All right, can we vote on the amendment?
Amendment first, okay. Uh, Councilmember G Resendine.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummet.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Brent Foley.
Aye.
Mayor Proctor, Laura LeBrun.
Aye.
Amendment passive, we'll vote on the motion.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Brent Foley.
Aye.
Mayor Proctor, Laura LeBrun.
Aye.
Councilmember G D Resendine.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummet.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Well, we will move on to, um, item number seven, and we do have a bullet comment back there. You wanna take us off or?
Or what?
Item number seven is discuss the appropriate action on ordinance updated and changed. Title nine, general regulations, chapter 91, trees. Um, that is, um, Councilmember Hines.
Sorry. First of all, I would like to say thank you, uh, for the time that you guys have invested in, uh, making an attempt to update and revise the tree ordinance. Um, however, I personally, as a homeowner, um, do not believe that it is complete. Um, and I'm gonna tell you on a minute, um, meaning I think they need to get re-reviewed, okay? Um, I did notice that there was a addition of line tailing, which I think is fantastic. Um, there is a new list of trees added on page 122, um, which is the native trees. Um, there was an addition of a certified arborist requirement, um, to cut protected trees on page 124, um, which is great. Um, I do want to differentiate, I think a lot of people are confused about heritage versus protected trees. Um, and our ordinance protected trees are only based on size, and that is 19 inches in diameter. Um, the heritage trees are a specific list that's in the ordinance. Um, and the reason I'm concerned about this is because, uh, I have seven trees in my yard that, uh, are based on the assessment that I was given by a certified arborist when I was going to cut them last year and decided, just based on the cost of the arborist, I couldn't afford it. Um, but he told me that they were already, uh, dying of oak will, they are past the point of salvation. Um, and also come to find out that third certified arborist that I had come out to my home had previously come out and cut down the other stumps, uh, in my yard that are also, that also, uh, had oak will. Um, so if I had known this, it would have been completely a different issue. Um, so basically, reading the ordinance, and, uh, I know you guys can't, uh, comment on bullet comments, but, uh, if at some point you can correct me if I'm incorrect in my interpretation of what I'm reading on the proposed ordinance. Um, with my seven sick trees, um, not only are they 19 inches in diameter or greater, they are also oak trees, which makes them heritage tree, okay? So based on my calculations of what I'm going to have to pay the city alone to remove these trees is $13,900. Or do a one-on-one replacement. And this is in addition to, and I'll come back to the one-on-one replacement on it. And this is in addition to the cost it's going to, it's, it's gonna cost me for the arborists to come out and actually do the cutting. Um, what I would like is, I know you can replace one-on-one, but people's interpretation right now of replacing one-on-one equal means replacing a tree of the same size. Uh, I have, like I said, my trees are very large, no nursery is gonna have a tree that size. Or if they do, the cost is gonna be so exorbitant, it's gonna cost. Or if they do, the cost is gonna be so exorbitant, it's gonna cost more max, you know, for trees. And so I would like the option to do the one-on-one replacement, which I don't honestly have a problem with, as long as I can do the one-on-one replacement with the growth of a tree from seed, proven that this tree that I'm choosing can grow in the hardiness zone eight that we live in, or more specific, eight B, that it will make it here. And the trees that I would like to replace my oak with, once I have to cut these trees down, depending on how this all goes, is northern catupat trees or southern catupat trees, there's, bless you, there's actually two different types. And I know for a fact that southern catupat trees will grow in this region much less, much, and further supported, sorry, that they'll grow in this city because there is a catupat tree on the golf course right across from it. When you come into the golf course area, there's a clubhouse on the right and you have to turn to go into the parking area, that tree on that corner is a catupat tree. It's, it's a very large tree and it can be ruined, but it's a fantastic looking tree. It's very big. And the bonus with catupat trees is, and it could help some of the homeowners as another option because I love oak trees, they're gorgeous, they're majestic, they're part of what makes Wood Creek, Wood Creek. However, leaves are horrible, okay? But the southern, the southern catupat trees, the leaves are five inches or larger in diameter and within two weeks they'll crumble away to nothing, really gone. So we may all get to clear our leaf blurs away, you know? And do I keep going or do I, she had the question?
The timer will run.
You have three minutes.
Oh, it didn't? Oh, I didn't hear it, I'm so sorry. Should I stop?
It's up, it's up to the board. If you would like to wrap up, I'd be glad.
Okay, um, what, what I'm more concerned with is, I, I'm on a limited income in different terms than some of like a retired person who might live here. I work part-time and it's a single, uh, single family earning income. So it's just me. So besides paying the home bills and everything else that needs to get paid, now I'm gonna have to pay $14,000 to the city because my trees are dying and they were dying to the point that I, I couldn't save them before I even moved into my house. And I would just like the option of the seeds to be, growing the seeds to be out there.
May I make a statement on that?
Sure.
In the proposed ordinance, 91.08, item letter D, it states that trees as diagnosed with oak wilt by a certified arborist may be exempt from any of the requirements. And so you, as a homeowner, would potentially not incur additional fees for removal.
I did see that, but what would be the, I think that needs to be expanded into like, like more detail. How would I qualify as potentially falling under that exemption? What do I, what steps do I need to take as a homeowner to make sure that I fall under that exemption? You know what I mean? Because it's so specific, I'm sorry, it's so specific with new building and if somebody else discovers tree oak, whatever you call it, oak wilt, and how the city can enforce oak wilt on your public nuisance, but it doesn't go into that much detail for the existing homeowner who's legitimately trying to take care of the trees, not removing the, the old company. I'm sorry, I went so long, I just, I didn't hear the timer.
There, there's also state law that invites tree removal. And I don't understand, but essentially if the tree removal becomes necessary, then there, there's an offset under, under the law. So, so in other words, if, if there are city fines or fees, the, the company tree removal, then the cost of removal under the law becomes an offset to what might otherwise be, be paid. And so it would be pretty easy to write, write in state statute references and exception, but people would know that.
Are you referencing the $480 exemption that they have in Austin as a benefit?
No, it's under, it's under state law, not under city of Austin. We can, we can.
It's, it's a hazardous clause. I can, I can make sure the wording's better. But yeah, it, it's already there essentially built in that if the tree poses significant hazard to the public and, and the removal is pressing that the city can step in or that the fees can be waived essentially to facilitate the removal. And in some cases, the city just price it off.
What you had in the, in the case, if, if, like you're saying, you, you've got clear evidence of oak wilt and present that in city eye and envision that scenario not, not applying. Because you're, you're gonna want to mitigate that.
The last, last thing we want in this ordinance is for it to be, you know, fit into the, to the property owners. You know, our, our goal is to protect the canopy.
I'd like to move that we enter into discussion on the tree ordinance as it's submitted. I'd like to introduce it now, if that's all right. I appreciate that comment and I would just like to say that Suzanne was also instrumental in looking at this again. Councilmember Grummet and I, myself worked on this together. Part of it was based on some incidences that occurred within our city regarding tree removals and the fees. And then part of it was also just wanting to visit it as a response to the other ordinance that's later on the agenda, the green spaces. So what you have in front of you is, is not invented by Councilmember Grummet and I. It is a blend of our previously existing ordinance. It also combines regulations from other cities. Once again, I did not invent the wheel here. So these regulations near Rollingwood and Austin, Austin and Rollingwood both regulate trees in the same manner, including on residential and existing development lots. There are 100 Texas communities that restrict the removal of trees from private land for scenic and environmental reasons. Bolverde is also one of those who are representatives from K-3's who's working on improving our site plan requirements, is directly representing regulations like Bolverde already. There are 50 cities in Texas that restrict removal of trees on private land. We could potentially be one of them, we already do to some degree in the ETJ. HV7 allows tree planning credits to offset fees and prohibits regulation lower than 10 inches in diameter. So there is a state precedent for existing regulations like these in place already and they give us guidelines for just how far we can take it. Trees outlive any single property owner and even many reiterations of generational ownership. So protecting our trees and their value is an essential function of the city as a whole, which is a big part of why challenges these rules have not gone well because basically trees are seen as an asset and that there is a duty to protect them beyond just a personal property owner's rights. There are several quotes in a document I forwarded to council that K-3's provided us. It addresses things that trees do for our environment. They cool your property, they reduce your energy costs, they clean our air, they hold our soil and help fight erosion. So these are all important things, especially when we're talking about city drainage. I'd also like to note that oak wilt knows no property lines and is an immediate issue in our city already with documented cases on public and private land. In addition, the K-3's document went on to discuss how developers do not bear the cost of tree preservation, they pass it on. So when we allow developers to carve up and mow down large portions of our city without any sort of requirements to replace it, we're actually viewing it as a service to our citizens and our tree canopy in general. These, these are not things that can be easily replaced and they will not be replaced in my lifetime or in your lifetime or the kids' lifetime. So this is a pretty serious document and these regulations are very serious. It's not something that I took lighthearted when drafting as a homeowner with a single income as well. I understand the cost of this, especially considering that our income comes from tree cutting. Jacob is not a certified arborist, so I also wanted to make that clear that this resolution, or sorry, this ordinance would in no way benefit my family in particular in case anybody had any concern with that. In regards to the ordinance, if you turn to page, excuse me, 135 of your packet, it outlines some of the more significant changes we've made. So the, the big one would be that this applies to all property under the city jurisdiction, includes residential, commercial, and recreational lands within the city limits and the ETJ. Advanced controversy on undesirable pruning practices such as line, line tailing, and it defines them. I would actually even like to consider that we add in tree topping. That was something I found in Bolverde recently that I realized was not in here. So I, I will make a move in that for myself to consider it a later date, or a later time today. It also enhances the tree board guidelines through that governing body and gives them a little bit more direction. It defines and designates what's a protected and heritage tree. So a protected tree, as Suzanne pointed out, our city secretary, is something over a certain diameter. And then the heritage trees are actually an even larger diameter and desired species. So that, that's the designation. Many trees are protected if they're over 19 inches. Only the trees that are over the other larger diameter, I'm not remembering, 24, thank you. And of those preferred species reach the heritage status. And heritage status means even more protection in this ordinance, meaning the removal would require a variance. Austin does this. It requires essentially a public hearing. You have to make a strong case for why you need to remove that tree beyond, I mean, obviously a public health hazard is an automatic yes.
Let's, let's just keep start saying the word healthy heritage tree versus?
Yeah, disease trees are automatically exempt from city fees and we can beef up that language, I'm not opposed to that. It is in there and, and I'm open to suggestions in the meantime.
Another thing that's in here that I don't think has come up in the conversation is that what we put together with, I think it was Councilmember Resendan's, to discuss on the oak wilt. Hope, I can't remember what we call it. Like you can apply for financial resources, or financial rebates if you do in a, in a situation where a replacement is required or you have to be helped. So that is available to all property owners, being presented as a ordinance.
But it does bother me that it says the city will offer up to $200 matching funds to replace any protected tree that has died. Do you know?
Councilmember Resendan, if you're for.
And, and yet, I, I hear you saying that the city would certainly not put that burden on citizens or any landowner, but it specifies matching funds up to $200, which is pretty miniscule, I'll be honest.
So we're offering, so I just want to be clear on what you're saying because when, when you presented the idea, it was to offer a payment for citizens who wished to replace trees that have died from oak wilt. And so in this language, the payment is offered for trees that have died of oak wilt, up to $200. I believe that was what you recommended, so what would you like it to say?
No, it's not what I recommended. What I recommended is that the city reimburse 50% of the owner's out-of-pocket expense when they have to replace the tree due to oak wilt, up to a maximum of $600.
Yes, that's it.
That's what I, that's what I had.
Do we, do we wish to make it as amendment, please?
Well, I mean, there's a whole lot that I'd recommend in there, so I'm not making it as a motion amendment. But I did want to clarify because I heard y'all saying that the city would definitely work to mitigate, but it's specifically stated here up to $200, which like I said, I feel is miniscule when I put a 20, I mean, a 40-gallon tree in my front yard and it was $800. So the city would reimburse even 300 of that. It would have helped because a cedar tree died. So I feel like that we could put a maximum on there, I feel like $200, okay? For the miniscule.
Okay. So I have a question. Okay, let's go on to the. Yeah, I was just gonna finish introducing it in case there's, but if, I mean, the document is there, if anybody can read it. If we want to go into edit, I by no means expect us to pass this without edits from you all and I encourage them and I definitely want us to consider them. One of the things that I think is really important before I just stop here is that when it comes to protected and heritage trees, we need trained professionals working on them because there are procedures that people do that will cause a tree to die. And there are things that an untrained person might not recognize that show a tree is already failing and you can make, you can make adjustments to the soil and things like that that an arborist, a certified arborist would know to do and recommend to our residents and that will actually save them money by advocating for trained professionals, just like we do with plumbing and electric. Trees are incredibly dangerous when they're failing to your life, to your property, and they get real expensive. So a certified arborist will recognize those signs very early on and help residents to mitigate those future costs by really affordable treatments and, and measures you can take early on. One of the main things that we've, I've seen in our city is main leader branches branching off. People don't realize that you're supposed to strap them together when they start doing that and it'll prevent the large one from failing. When those large ones fail and they smash into your roof or your car or whatever, they cause significant damage. And they don't, it's not something, there's a lot of warning signs, the tree just fails one day. And so, but a trained professional sees that stuff, they make these recommendations. So that, that to me was the one thing in this that I was concerned about, maybe people not understanding that why I'm recommending we have a trained professional. Because to me, this is like electricity and plumbing. You're talking about large, heavy limbs that cause a lot of damage. You're talking about oak wilt that could cost people thousands of dollars to deal with. So this is, you know, a big thing.
If I may.
Yes.
This is a, we've been talking about, I've read that it says a tree that is diagnosed with oak wilt and we've been talking about oak wilt is exempted from replacement cost. Okay, the listing of heritage trees goes beyond oaks. And I'm gonna give you a perfect example. One of, I have two Arizona hashes that are under this heritage trees. They're both extremely large. They're planted by my late husband in 1988. I have since the, no, the snowstorm, I have been trying to save. And I think they're coming back. They told me you need to wait that. So my question is, a tree that is with, should, I would like to see that the exemption of replacement cost goes beyond oak skids because a tree can be dead, dying from a disease other than oak wilt. I have a lot of elves in my property. I have the Arizona hashes, I have my oats, and I have, so it is just, so I don't know if the trees are oats or not, but in my case, these trees, I think by now they're about 6% back. But if I were to be told that they were to fail on this schedule, I would have to pay but I don't get the benefit of the exemption because they're from disease.
No, in the events of a, a, an environmental event, as in the freeze.
I understand that, but there's a time limit to be placed, this was two years ago.
Okay, so we would, you see, you're suggesting we adjust, adjust the language.
Yes.
On, so there's a section about diseases other than oak wilt. And it says the city can enter into all kinds of agreements that it needs necessarily to help.
So you're suggesting you adjust the language to say that a tree that is diagnosed with, is diagnosed by a certified professional, I have no objection to that, as with a disease or disease or dying, that we don't limit it to oak wilt. Trees can die from, from other type of diseases, actually.
Yeah, so, so in this, this portion where it addresses other diseases, as diagnosed by an arborist, you're saying that the city should be able to waive fees?
Yes, if the tree is dead or dying from, is a certified, because I, you know, and I, and I read, I, I saw that allows for trees to be removed per storm or fire freeze without a permit. But there is a time limit where you have to remove it. And many of us, I know many of us have, were told to not cut their trees this spring. Wait another year or two, the trees may come back.
Oh, let's get the original motion. It's just that we just guys can consider passing it so we can, I'm collecting a list of amendments. You also. It's just that we just guys can consider passing it so we can, I'm collecting a list of amendments you also are suggesting. So we might just do a large amendment list and then consider bringing it back in its finalized version. It just depends on how much we have to see.
Could we tangle it and come back with our edit notes?
Why are they not at this meeting? Edit notes.
Well, I'm going to say this right now, I can't vote for it. You need to say this here right now. I think it needs work.
Yeah.
But I'm happy to discuss it, but.
I have no ability to discuss all of this with you all in a large group.
Yeah.
We need to do it, yeah, here now, and provide them that you have. Because we've had this for over a week now, right?
I spent two days reading it, so I'm ready to talk about it.
Okay.
I think you can vote for it. You know, it may have to come back because this is a really important, complex area that we're people working on, so.
Okay, and I want to say, in fact, if I might add to, I'm trying to remember the floor instead. Uh, I couldn't make a note to myself. I made a note here while I was reviewing the package that maybe we should be, we should refer this to the tree board on which we have a certified arborist.
No, he's not certified.
Or they're.
He's not certified.
Not yet.
Jacob is an arborist. He's considered a tree worker. He is considered a tree climber. And he was a law clerk, he was certified. He's been working for ten years, but no, he has not passed his certification exam. It's important to designate, it's different. I'm a member of the IFA.
I thought it was, so I accept the clarification. But regardless, I, I thought maybe this, if we could take it to the tree board for them to review and make recommendations um, as part of their responsibilities. Also, when we did the tree ordinance in the past, and I am, uh, we had, because they would have, at that time, we exempted kind of property owners. It was, it was, and this one does not, so I'm, and this is a question that I think your help, Mr. Attorney. Since this has a significant impact, it can have a significant financial impact on our citizens. Should we not have this, should we not have a public hearing?
I mean, that's not the standard for having a public hearing. There's, there's a pretty recent case law out of the San Antonio Court of Appeals that has been adopted by the Third Circuit Appeals, essentially looks at pre-ordinances as planning and zoning and gets pretty darned and broad sweeping authority if the city is to do that, whether it's anybody's got a here or not. Yeah, not like you'd hear.
I do.
Uh, good grief.
Uh. It needs to.
Yeah, I'll do it. Um, but that, that authority is there. Whether or not this body deems it to be good public policy to have a public hearing, that's, that's left to your sound discretion. Uh, the, the other thing that I will say is that the financial impact and, and what the city may be, may receive has to be considered in relation to the enforcement of what it's doing. But there's, there's a, a broad amount of, of what some people would call excessive, what some people would call reasonable, but what some people would call not excessive enough. Tree regulations threatening this town is in the state of Texas. And this falls somewhere on the spectrum of it. So, I, I mean, essentially, from a legal standpoint, we are, we are wading into something that is still being flushed out in the state of Texas. There's no hard and fast guiding authority on this other than cities can regulate trees at this level as part of their, uh, knowing subdivision type authority. What you guys decide to do with public hearings is left to you.
Thank you for that. So my, my, so I still, would you, I still would like to make this statement suggesting that we make that refer to the tree board. I personally, I am confused and I feel that I'm not ready to vote either, like, for example. When you are replacing a heritage tree and it says the city, I think we need to be more specific because the city says allow not to exceed $100. I think $100 per inch for a tree is, is, is a lot. I pray differently.
So.
Let me, let me finish this. When you, let's say I'm on a thirty inch, which I do, I think it's probably thirty inch diameter tree. But a heritage tree is, is defined a tree that exceeds nineteen inches or more. And I'm seeing calculations that you base the fee on the difference between nineteen and thirty rather than the total diameter. I think that this is something when Councilmember Jackson, my court, I think that's kind of how we figure it out. So I'm confused. This is my personal confusion. So I would like to know how that would be actually measured. And I think $100 per inch, maybe if we're going to do that, we need to think about the impact on a homeowner of $14,000 to stop $5,000 to get a peace of state in here.
May I clarify?
Yes, that's it.
So that it's $100 per diameter. This is not circumference. Circumference and diameter are two different things.
Okay.
Split, yeah. So circumference is if you do this, diameter is if you do this. So they line between. And so these numbers, as, as are stated in here, are not something we produced. These are numbers taken from what other cities are doing. So essentially, it's a common, um, thing to assess that type of fee. And it was actually one of the more conservative options we found. And, um, and then it clarifies that you cannot exceed 10% of the current value of the property. So if somebody has a ton of heritage oak trees, which I actually do, massive ones, and they all started failing and I'm having to replace and it's not diagnosed and I'm freaking out, right? It's only 10% of my property cost, the max I could ever be required to pay. So we, you know, there are, there's.
Your, your home.
Of the current property value, it's set at max. So what we had before was a $6,000 cap that was prorated for size of property. So it was $6,000 per acre you could be required to pay for removal of trees, right? So this shifts that. It increases your removal fees. But again, we're not talking removal of trees that are dying or hazardous. We're talking about, somebody says, I want a new pool over there and I want to cut down this huge oak tree and put my pool in right there, you know?
And if I may interject, how this actually came into us, this reexamination of the tree ordinance is, um, our city staff brought us out to, uh.
Yeah, forty-one.
Twenty-one and thirty-one, and it was all these massive heritage trees. And it's cheap, one of you both pointed out, like, you know that they only have to pay $2,000 because they can just clear down this whole property and they have like local values. So that's why, that was the main point that those two. Can we look at this?
Yeah.
Because it's not going to cost that much for people to just clear, cut out all our trees.
Yeah, and, and I, and it's sad what they did. So, okay, thank you, sir, but I still, I, I think that if we do, you know, I am, I'm, I'm fine with the protection. I'm fine with allowing for trees to be removed. I think it's great that we have the permission that if somebody has a storm or a freeze, they look after it, right? I just, I'm asking, please consider that we make their own heritage trees in the list. If we could say spend that to other diseases. I am, uh, to be, to be, to also, everything else that I have is, that's the only element.
So we're, we're starting to get ourselves something new to add.
And what she also had to send it to the tree board, so I have the notes here. I do not expect this to pass today. I want your edits, I want them discussed. I will fix the document and we consider what to do with it afterwards, Mr. Foley.
Okay.
I'm directing your attention. That's me.
I can't.
No. Member Foley?
Oh, Mr. Foley, go ahead.
Okay.
Um, well, let me say this. I, I, I mean, this is both of my heart and I really, really feel this. Um, and I think it's really important. I did spend a lot of time going through both ordinances and I kind of, you know, come up with the right answer. One thing, we, we can't let what happened with our twenty-one, thirty-one champion happen, can't. I mean, that, that's a disaster. It really makes me angry. Um, so I thank you for working on this. I do have concerns. I think they're both, you know, legal and practical. Let me just kind of walk through what, what my thinking process is real quick. You know, we have an existing ordinance that we passed, you know, shortly after we, the new council came in place, which is good because we didn't have any of it before. Uh, that ordinance obviously needs work, uh, but the way the, the existing ordinance is, it applies to new construction, new development. The homeowners, you know, they're not, the only thing they have to worry about is getting trimming permits and oak wilt provisions. That ordinance definitely need to clean up. The penalty provisions were really weak because that guy over there took advantage of it. We got out for a few thousand bucks, quit cutting too much. So clearly, we need to fix that. Um, the new one, I, I like the fact that we're trying to do better. But here are my concerns and I have solutions. Uh, we're, we're going to get everyone in under, be regulated, not just new, new developments. And that, that concerns me a little bit because I don't think, but that we can regulate like that, uh, in the ETJ. I think we can only regulate with regard to new development. And I'm, I'm referring to the case that's, uh, Milestone versus San Antonio. I think I sent you a copy the other day.
I think it's one of those.
Okay.
What's that?
Yeah. It's one of them.
Yeah, and, and it specifically says that if you can regulate, uh, you know, we can have a tree ordinance, but it only applies to new development. So the extent that we're trying to impose, um, you know, regulations on ETJ, it's not new development. I don't think that's going to survive, uh, you know?
Yeah.
So I'm worried about that. Let me finish, okay? Uh, so I, I think we need to take a hard look at that. I'm also concerned about regulating existing homeowners. I feel a little better after the discussion today, but the feedback and bidding from people is they're worried about it. They think it's really burdensome and expensive. I don't think existing homeowners are really the problem. You know, I think it's the new development that we really need to focus on and not get caught up in what people are necessarily doing on their own property. So I have a concern about that. You felt that a little bit in our discussion today. The other thing I'm concerned about is having a retained certified arborist to try and protect and heritage trees. I have probably several at least protected trees that a lot of them are cedar mountains or not oak trees. I spent a lot of money taking care of them, but I don't think I always need a certified arborist for some of these things. Um, so if we're going to have to require certified arborists, I would say at least restrict that. If we're going to regulate individual homeowners and we're going to force them to get certified ordinance, uh, arborists, then at least let's just utilize it with regard to oak trees. Because oak is the ones that we're worried about. If you do that wrong, you can hurt your neighbors in terms of spraying oak wilt. So I prefer not to regulate homeowners at all, but if we do, let's at least back off. It's goodbye arborist a little bit. Um, so, I mean, my solution is it may be easier, maybe to work with the existing and update that. I don't know in terms of physically trying to get it done. Um, I think that, you know, the heritage protected pre-protect, uh, tree protections should apply. New construction, but existing homeowners keep the same provisions in there. We're trimming, removal, oak wilt provisions. And then if you do a certified arborist home with regard to oak trees. I think we need to enhance the cashed-in provision. Um, that guy apparently has a $50,000 lot. Uh, it may be easier for him just to pay 10% of the $50 grant and then tear down all trees. So for new development, we may put more teeth in that. Make it a lot more expensive for someone to clear cut like that. Um, and that's pretty much it. I, I know there's some typos in the existing ordinance, so those are probably going to need cleared up. So those are my concerns. I hope I made that clear, but I, I'm with you. You know, I really am. I just want to make sure we get it right.
I'd also like to see some kind of penalty written in of our, uh, workers that work on our trees are not sterilizing their equipment before they come in and start working because that's a big part of what's spreading for wilt and our work on our ranch. And we have lots of problems with people coming in with backups or chainsaws and working on the ranch. And they had brought the virus from another property because they didn't sterilize and sanitize the equipment. And so I'd like to see something written in that would put some kind of heavy penalty on anybody securing a permit to work on trees in our city.
Yes.
I just wanted to address a couple of Mr. Foley's comments that doesn't fit. Um, so I did read that case and what I noticed in the case was it, what the court, well, first off, the court said they, they could do what they were doing. The city of San Antonio had every right to do what they were doing. When they talked about the concern about, um, existing versus new development, what the court case noted was actually that because the city's tree ordinance was, um, over here and the site plan was over here, that to really enforce tree ordinances in the ETJ, you needed to be in your site plan as well. And so that was the designation that they made in that court case. And so that's something that the city moving forward, whenever we decide, whatever we want to do, it would need to go to Brandon to involve in the one four, one five four, one five five. Edith, he and I already discussed that because we did not know each other was working on these things. And it came about during a neutral land use discussion. And so, uh, it was like, okay, well, once council decides what to do, we have a document, we'll send it to him and then he can include it in our site plan. And that is what gives us the teeth to enforce anything in the ETJ. It has to be in the site plan regulation. And so that's what that court case established beyond saying, yes, you, you, your city can regulate trees on private property. The other thing about, um, enhancing the fees for new development, we can change that. However, there are some state laws regulating what we can do there. There are percentages that they, we are required to allot for them to do, um, and, uh, planting of trees, but they can only do that to a certain percent and then they have to pay the rest. So we can beef up what they have to pay, but we also, we have to be careful because there are rules about that percentage. And so they're, they're written in there. But I, I'm, I've taken all your suggestions. And so if anybody has anybody, any more suggestions, what I would like to do at this time is to issue the motion that we send this to the tree board with your suggested edits today for them to consider and make a recommendation after council.
If I'm.
The motion, uh, we have a second.
I'm sorry.
Say a little bit, Councilman Crummer.
Yeah, I have a good question. And, uh, when you talk about the value of the property, is it the, your sales value that comes from the, like the whole, your, your lot, your lot and your home?
So.
Where's the land value?
Um, it's the current value of the property, which would be probably based in the Hayes County tax appraisal record. And so that would be something that we would likely seek, um, outside designation. I mean, the, the best resource for that is the appraisal district.
Yeah, and my.
The question is.
And you understand, it's the value of property. So the value of the property is the whole thing. Uh, we can make that designation if you're preferring to just do the value of the land.
I think the value of the land because would be particularly, okay, I bought my house, certified my house, that brings things $473,000. So if we extend from sand, that's $47,000 before I can, I, I would have to, you know. So my question, I think it would do the land, that was, that's a suggestion. It would focus on the land, although the land is pretty high, it still would not be as devastating.
Recognize that if the developer is going to grow up lot value, maybe less expensive for him to just pay 10% of lot value. It's a bulldozer, we may have to change that. So let me say this real quick. I, I understand this is trying to work together, you know? I really thank you for working on this because it's not easy. This is a really difficult ordinance to put together and there's a lot of time putting laws and everything else. Thank you for doing that and, uh, I really appreciate it because it's so important for this community.
On, on development, you could even put more teeth in extended ETJ on that. On the developments, on the developments, sorry, yeah.
That's fine. And that, and I wanted to say that, I know I have two attorneys here and I don't want to argue with the attorneys, but I understood what, and based on what a previous city attorney said, I understood what that case law, case, I understood what Councilmember Hines did. So if you see, that's why section 154, 155 are so critical for us. If they're, this is the site plan and it's a subdivision, absolutely the city has the right to regulate, just a little.
And, and to be clear, I, my, my reading of, of the case was more aligned with Dever's than Brent's. I, I see, I see the case as providing more broad and sweeping authority and that's why I gave that. And we can, we can hash that.
We can sort of, yeah. So we have a motion on the floor to send this, uh, to the tree board with the edits. Um, and we have a second. Sorry, and we have a second.
We have one just first. Councilmember Greg Foley.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Crummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Judy Bresdin.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Orobrun.
Aye.
All right, great. Thank you very much. We're gonna move to number eight. And to discuss and take appropriate action on ordinance limiting Title IX general regulations and Chapter ninety-eight street trees, right-of-way public street spaces and city parks through the city would record the ordinances. Councilmember Heinz.
So I would like to move as written in state.
I second. Thinking about Councilmember Grummer.
Please go ahead.
So. The question might be why new different ordinances? Because of the size of them. Also, the green space ordinance, as it can be called, is directly related to public lands in particular. So these are lands owned by the city or essentially like a public right-of-way, like the triangle is a public right-of-way. It's not really a park. It's just a green space, public land. So this establishes protections for trees on public land and also other shrubbery and greenery. It creates a full inventory of all public lands that not previously exist for us. So we had no official record beyond the parks master plan, which was not in the code. So this treats a mass and an inventory into our code. It creates a formal process for their care and maintenance. Right now, there is nothing really directed in that. We just have a budget by an item that can be used. It establishes parking regulations that we previously did not have on these spaces. So public right-of-way was something we allowed parking on, but this would mean parking in these public green spaces, which means mowing over plants at times. So this actually tries to kind of further define the parking regulations and provide some protections. It also allows for recognition and monetary support for those citizens who wish to volunteer hours to improving our community via gardening and landscaping in public areas. So it does, we do ask that those people come in and say, hey, I would really like to meet in the entrance of Wood Creek. And we get their contact information. We have that on record so that we know because we don't want people fighting each other for areas or undoing someone else's work. But it also kind of opens up that opportunity for those screen certification events and directing money to funding projects to make our city more beautiful and maintain it.
Mayor Rayer? Yes, please. The part I like about this in particular is that before this was created, we had no protection for the street trees. And in Brook Meadow in particular, we dearly love our street trees. So I'm very glad to see this now exists. And also thank you for the map. For including the maps, which should be all listed.
Did I miss anything?
Now, I just wondered how, just going to work with here with policies will be on down to be discussed later in the, talking about citizens obligating city to cost.
Actually, so the ordinance says that the city is obligated, but that it allows the city to consider devoting funds. So a citizen cannot go plant a bunch of plants, give a receipt to the city and say, I want money. The city can enter into agreement if it wishes. So those things would essentially come before council if they are over a certain amount.
I think, I think it pretty clearly says that it's on their own.
Yes.
Unless permitted.
Right. You have to seek a permit for any significant changes too. So what allows is the residents to sort of volunteer, take on an area and maintain it, but they can't go in and remove a tree. They can't go in and plant a whole new tree. Those things still require permits. Council, council can say tree board does that or parks or whoever, but essentially, you know, it just allows more space for volunteers and recognizing them through those events, but it also kind of tanks down on the, you know, like this isn't a free-for-all. Don't go rip up everything in Augusta Park and redo it in your, in your vision, so.
All right. Well, let me add one other question though, okay? So with the Platinum Panel, when they're looking at roads to be repaired, supposed to be repaired, how, I know it's possible to save the street trees, but to be widening the road up until, you know, basically to the fifty-foot easy. So how will this coordinate with their recommendations?
I hope so. And it's only a hope, but it's also message that has been given me to the citizens that you would consider the street trees as part of property common measures. And I would say that unless the tree is there, if the tree could be removed only under dire circumstances, and even in those circumstances, I would recommend that, I think that the majority of residents would like to see it replaced. We very often hear from the residents on Brook Hollow about if the trees were there, we wouldn't have the stadium on Brook Hollow that we do. So again, I'm only, this is my, this is not just my personal opinion. It's what they could mean to me as citizens. So we need to protect those trees. So I don't think there is a conflict.
Okay, well, and as I say when I was on the radio, that there are ways to have street trees, but it will be wide, actually you have to maintain, have the tree there and make the roadway far enough from the root system.
Right.
And so that's one thing everyone has to understand that, that that roadway might be farther up on the city east, but that's in the people's front yard, that's not their yard. And that's fine.
Yeah.
And that's one of the things that we were talking about earlier when we have our engineers look at a specific road and say, we're going to do something about it, if it's one that has street trees in it and they can, and they can either protect or even further protect by providing a little bit more dirt around the tree. Like we looked at, we looked at the tree or some of the, like planting a tree at the Brook Meadow entrance, where we're doing the planter there. And the advice we got was, you know, if there wasn't already a tree there, don't do it. Because it's just too much of a strength. But if there's a tree there and it's successful, then you do everything you can to protect it. And so that's just part of the, that's just part of the deal when they do the engineering is that we're going to put this road through there and we're going to go around that tree. Yep. I just want the citizens to understand that there are ways to protect the tree, but it could be rather random. Okay. That's my proposal.
I like this because when this includes the government body and decision to remove trees, it's like in, remove road trees. What was you're talking about in Brook Hollow is you just woke up one day and the trees were gone and you ask people, what happened? Well, you know, they need to go away. It's, well, who decided that? Well, you know, in that, we should be linked in that, we should be making the decisions. Who made that?
If this, if this ordinance is in place, we couldn't do it.
Right.
Without the government body.
Yeah.
So the government body was all of that decision.
I think I was on the government body. I don't remember anything about it.
Not on, not on.
Oh, yeah. So you're saying the city council voted to take the.
They approved of the plans, yes, they did.
Yeah. Did they know they were voting to take the trees out?
Yes, and it's going back, but even one that's on the far north end, an arborist was contacted to find out if the tree could be saved and he basically stated that it would be dead within five years.
Yeah, well, I think we need to be involved in that. I'm not sure that's how that really happens, but I don't think it should ever happen again without the council being involved in, you know, like this ordinance. Government resign.
One of the things that I think we will see happening though, not in regards to the street tree, but one of the problems that we had with the other construction was once you widen the road, the sidelines are not clear. So when someone's pulling out of the road, there were trees that sat on the corners of those roads and your sideline wasn't clear. And those were engineering decisions more than they were council decisions.
No, that shouldn't happen again, you know? I mean, if an engineer's going to come out here and say, we're going to get rid of these trees, we need to be involved in that decision. I think that's.
Well, one of the things that, you know, that.
I'm sorry. So I.
I'm just thinking, you know, just looking at that, that tree at Brook Hollow, the large tree that was taken out, and I know it was diseased and didn't have much, much time left. But, you know, if, if there was a discussion about what the alternative to that would be rather than just paving over it, we could have had a little roundabout or something to affect the same traffic coming to the tree did. But. And basically, it was council decision to approve the, the site plan.
Right, right. That's my question.
Well, the beauty of all of this is we get to decide, we get to decide what the roads look like, we get to decide if the trees stay. This ordinance helps enforce that decision process in regards to widening streets and that being a mandatory concept. If it's around a tree to preserve a tree, I believe citizens would likely support that. I do know that in all of our surveys, maintaining narrow streets has been consistently conveyed to us over and over. So when we talk about widening the street, we're not talking about widening it to make it wider for traffic. We're talking about adjusting to incorporate the existing tree and promote its life. And I believe the concept of, if a tree has to be removed because it's dying, this plan says replace it essentially. And so it's not just pave everything, it's let's find a suitable way to maintain the character of Wood Creek, the rural aspects of it, the beauty of it, and all of that stems around our trees and our natural wildlife and in the setting that these, you know, these things provide. So I'm.
If I, may?
Yeah.
Mayor?
You're glorious.
I wanted to kind of reference back to the comprehensive plans survey. On the question of what do you see as the most pressing issue for Wood Creek in the next several years, of course, number one was improving road noise. Second was maintaining Wood Creek's character. And the fourth was protecting the trees. And as our mayor likes to say, Wood Creek without its trees is just creek. The other part of question on the comprehensive plan survey, what do you like most about Wood Creek? The number one answer is natural. Trees are an important aspect of.
So we don't, we don't have a motion to pass the ordinance, see?
I would like to move that we pass this ordinance as written.
Second. Thinking about Councilmember Fuller. And they probably just got some capability.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Judy Brezendian.
Aye.
Mayor Protem O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Dever Heinz.
Aye.
Councilmember Brent Fuller.
Aye. Great, great, thank you all. Next one is number nine. Do we need to reset, I think? Five-minute recess? Yeah.
Yeah.
Five minutes.
I was in a position that's getting nervous. I was finishing that petition. And the guy was trying to do that. He finally looked at my, he said, this is what we just tried to put more branches on the tree. And I looked at it and he said, this branch is more valuable. That was my favorite incident. That was the, that was hot. So yes, he was, he was. Have you heard of someone out there, Bigmore? Yeah, I would, I went out there once to get something, but I never turned the grass all the animals and all that stuff. It's looks pretty nice. Yeah? You want to fear that? Well, that's cool. My parents used to live in Wood Creek, so I used to. I mean, you've done that.
Whatever. It's culture here.
I think we need to change places and everything.
We should, we should. Get anything out of the way. What are you talking about? Instead of my chair.
Okay. They're, they're good spirits. That could have been a lot worse for them. So. Well, initially, we were. Yeah, everybody did. They, they, they. But Bob was seven, you know, they, he paid six figures in labor fees. And they're. Never there. He's giving this, he said.
That's one of the visiting energies that we hear. I don't. In fact, when, you know, couple like Whipper and, and Blanket folks have more of a V-shaped table.
Oh.
And so the mayor is like a point and can see everybody a little bit easier. It'd be tough in here because we just don't have the space.
Deborah, do you ever sleep, man? I mean, your work is.
I guarantee.
Your work is impeccable, you know, but the, I mean, the way it's presented in the maps and all that stuff.
I do sleep a lot.
Do you?
Or something, right?
No.
She just takes the battery down.
I think it's probably to be fast on computer.
Yeah.
So maybe the work doesn't.
That's not just that, computer, you're typing things, you're, you spend a lot, I know, I've said this a million times, I do not know how you do it because I had, and your ability to.
He's asking.
No, yeah. That's true.
I mean, I think they're also pretty, like, easy, you know, it's not like they have, I mean, hustle, training, body training is difficult, but I'm not like feeling that it's a big craze.
I hear your graphics stuff's real good. Check out a lesson.
These computers look all like, like whatever, limited application. Yeah, it's just a markup feature. Yeah, you take a screen off, not with your phone.
Okay.
And that's a markup feature.
You look like, you look like.
No.
Really. With Brett's, he said, you're like a law student.
I've been told it should have been a lawyer any time.
Would you have a good one? Would you tap Aurora? They're, they're lining up with the bathroom. I should have figured that out in time, maybe five minutes.
Just gonna use the men's.
There's somebody in there too.
Oh.
What, what? Use your men's?
Yes, I use the men's wherever I go. I actually got kicked out of the place one time for doing that.
Well, you know. If you gotta get bad enough.
It wasn't a monthly saw or anything, but they did not, they could explain. I didn't think they were playing either, I just needed to go to the bathroom.
Y'all, I'm using it, I need to. Y'all, I have a lookout.
Well, the girls line up.
Hey, y'all.
Because they stand and.
You know, we're live stuff.
They're well in front of the bathroom.
Talking about your bathroom.
I was kicked out of the bathroom.
All right.
My daughter. Would it be okay if my neighbor had access?
Did you get to the, you got her?
Yeah, she's coming within like the next thirty minutes.
And give her the keys?
Yeah.
Sure. All right. Excellent.
Yeah, wait, we don't have.
They're out there. Are they up front?
Yeah, I thought they were outside.
Hey, last I've got Suzanne Marine, that's a lot here about. Is it smoking?
No. It's not like a princess.
All right. Come back into session at seven fifty. I don't remember mine. Yeah, this, we didn't, we haven't discussed like progress on requesting the tree board to create free inventory of trees. I move located on city. I know it's written. I didn't say it all. I didn't state it all. It wasn't all stated.
Yeah.
If you'd like to make the motion, please read it.
I'm going to request the tree board to create a tree inventory of city owned, on city owned property.
Set the city parks and. And present the findings to the city. Seconded by Mayor Protem Lebrun. All right, so, so specifically, this is for the, this is sort of related to our, to item number eight and that it is on public property. It's not the tree inventory that they're instructed to do as part of their charge. The overall, you're asking.
Correct. You're referring to trees of the USDA. I sent the um, the documents to Brent's liaison on tree board. I think you might be overreading the sentence.
Well, they're, they're, one of their targets is to create or to work on a tree inventory. Overall, this item is specifically for city owned properties. That's the distinction I'm trying to make.
That's the distinction. If appropriate, my council, I'd like the packet for this item sent forward to the tree board to consider. And it are links of possible tools that can be used to create a tree inventory in city owned property. As well as examples of how those tools are being used. The map from item eight on page one forty-nine of the green spaces ordinance, I would also like to include in that packet. And another possible tool not shown in this packet is iTreetools.org, which is from the USDA or.
All right. It's pretty straightforward. We have a motion and a second. Any suggestions?
Does that amend then?
No, it's, it's not. It's, it's, this is printed. It's just, I wanted it to be fully entered, fully written as a reference.
That's definitely good.
Yeah, and it was edited fine. Remember, ten one four one. All right, then let's, um, then we can take a vote on it.
Okay. Mayor Protem Aurora Lebrun?
Aye.
Councilmember Judy Brezlin?
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grommer?
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Councilmember Brent Coley?
Aye. All right. President, unanimous, please. Item number ten, discussion taking appropriate actions on a resolution of the city which would affect the city's procurement policies. Councilmember Hines?
I would like to move as written and stated.
I second.
Have discussion?
So. Several months ago, council approved the update of our council provided binders and the placement of these documents in a digital format online for the residents. So this is a follow-up of that item. So this would make this document digital if approved. Uh, the goal of the writing of this document was to tighten the purse strings, bring greater financial accountability for us, it is since and ensure taxpayer money has strong safeguards against corruption and unintentional mismanagement of finances. The largest changes are that all unbudgeted purchases are now subject to council approval. Cap to, to get free quotes have been lowered from seven hundred and fifty dollars to three hundred dollars. And it establishes a spending limit without reporting. Um, the establishment of the cap for spending without a report to council, this was something it discussed with city manager Brenton Lewis in a meeting with councilman McGovern and myself. At the time, the amount fifteen hundred came up as a suggestion in the discussion. It was also discussed that Rembling has a similar policy and they have set their limit at a thousand. At the time, city manager Lewis, you know, seemed amicable to the idea. Um, obviously, all aspects of this document can be discussed and can amend portions of it. Um, the other thing I wanted to note is that for some reason, there's like weird tabbing features in some of my documents. I thought I figured out what I was doing wrong or how this was translating badly. But if we do move forward with this document, we need to fix the tabbing under compliance. And I'm more than happy to do that for the city and resend it. I'm not really sure what happened there. My apologies.
Right. Discussion?
I just, I just want to point out on C one about purchase orders uh required of anything over a hundred dollars. And basically, you know, we don't have a purchase order process set up. But if it, you know, if we have a purchase for a hundred and one dollars, you're going to spend more on personnel costs getting purchase order ready, then we'll issue it and then just go ahead and buy it.
So is that different than what it was previously? Because a lot of the language is actually.
Well, but previously, when that was adopted in two thousand and fifteen, yeah, a hundred dollars was a lot different than it is now.
Okay.
But we don't have a purchase order process?
Well, the thing is, we only have three staff members, so we discuss everything.
But they're not, they're not the literal.
There's not a true purchase order where somebody has to complete it, the men's made for approval, issue the four copies to the vendors and stuff, and then go through that process.
So what is the language you are recommending? When she purchases, okay, so I'm just gonna read it. Purchase of goods is subject to the city manager's approval. Authorized employees may make purchases up to a hundred dollars without the use of a purchase order or written contract for items such as office supplies, food and beverages needed for events and other similarities.
Yeah, I read that as two separate sentences. You can at any time approve the total. And staff can at any time make purchases up to a hundred dollars without going.
Well, well, my concern is, is just like um that Sam has been working on comparing manuals for everyone to be issued. And if we have buy seven three ring binders, it will be over a hundred dollars.
But purchases of goods is subject to the city manager's approval.
Right. But it also says without the use of a purchase. May. May make purchases up to a hundred dollars without the use of a purchase order. So I, the way I read it is, if it's over a hundred dollars, then there has to be a purchase order issued. Or a written contract.
I'm seeing it as two separate. Purchase of goods is subject to the city manager's approval. So if you give the approval to do these contracts with binders and it's over a hundred dollars.
They're talking on your approval.
Yeah.
So if that's your approval, that's talking to you. If they go down to Ace and pick up a bunch of stuff under a hundred bucks, it's okay.
Well, I just like for it to be more defined because when I, I read it both ways. And it's just like, okay, authorized employees, they make purchases up to a hundred dollars without the use of a purchase order.
So would you like to remove per, use of purchase order? Or, I mean, what is the language you would like to see?
Well, basically though, uh, I'd like to see purchase of goods that's subject to the city manager's approval as long as it's within the budget. But then we have.
So they can't be any purchases without your approval. We're not, you know.
Right up.
And so then the applicant, the application would turn to the concept of the max would be three hundred dollars and then any, and then you'd have to get quotes.
Well, we're going, we're going to get that.
It says purchase of goods. So this is the purchase of goods. Purchase of goods is subject to the city manager's approval. And you don't want them having to submit any kind of written information if it's over a certain amount.
And we did get quotes, you know, it's, we get quotes for the sides, everything else. And we all discuss it and I see what the quote has been. Okay, so, and we have one vendor we use for our, us for science because they're local. So basically, I, I'd like to see something that does not have without the use of a purchase order or written contract.
It's not a quote.
And it, a quote is, and I see that. Uh, so, but then when you say without the use of a purchase order, my mind is somebody has to go in there, pack up a purchase order and authorize the purchase of that. You know, it just seems like standard operating control cell and maybe a hundred dollars is too little, but I mean.
Yeah.
May I? So in the previous policy, it said, under local purchases, item two, with the authorization of the city manager, authorized employees may make local purchases not exceeding a hundred dollars without the use of a purchase order. So again, the language is directly copied from it. So I'm happy to alter the language. I would like to keep some sort of spending cap.
Oh, I don't have a problem with that. It's just that when, and as far as I know, I don't know, yeah, even my predecessors never had a written purchase order of any kind.
Even though we.
It was in the policy, so that is probably the problem. These policies need to be updated. I don't think purchase orders are common use anymore. I think what we talk about these days is invoice. You get invoice, you pay an invoice and then you get your goods. Or you, uh, you know, you make purchases off of Amazon, I think is what our staff does frequently. So what is the appropriate amount you would like to see here, sir?
Not yet. I'd like to hear the answer to that question first.
Oh, well, and, and, and actually, we had a long discussion about that today. And basically, I'm thinking, all right, five hundred dollars. I don't want it where people are thinking, well, I can purchase, and this is for future too. I don't want it where people can think about this and this is under the procurement for dummy stamp book or whatever it was that I had. But one of the biggest discussions has always been, they say, well, uh, I limited this purchase office supply. Well, let me go out and buy uh three different types or three and break it up so it's under. And I, I don't want that. Because if somebody needs to go out and buy two, you know, well, say five cases of paper, then, you know, we'll get the quotes stuff. But I don't want that anybody to try to break up the purchase itself, make it fall under anything.
So if, if I heard you right before on C one, what you would ask is for it to be purchase of goods is subject to the city manager's approval so long as um the items are within the budget and full stop and the end of, end of paragraph. So it doesn't worry about authorized, and I'll get to my thinking of this. It doesn't, we just eliminate all of the office supply and beverage because the number two says an invoice charged, slip or received must be obtained and submitted to the city manager, you know, for all purposes. Um, so, so it sort of had it covered there. I mean, if you want to put a spending cap in there, um, you know, at, you know, purchase of goods, you know, up to the, you know, five hundred dollars maybe for, I mean, we could do something along those lines. But I understand what, I understand the confusion on that. And it's something that was, you know, as we started looking at the policies, one of the things that we, you know, would make clear to us is none of this is even, you know, it, we, we give it app in the book, but it doesn't really mean anything because it's been out of, you know, out of.
It's not part of the school business. Can I? So on number three, to address your concern, because it says purchases for daily operations and janitorial supplies should be purchased in bulk. Period. You know, I mean, that's, you're already telling people they're supposed to be purchasing things in, in bulk. And I think having a spending cap, okay, so I hear you, I don't disagree. My concern and the whole point, I think, of these spending caps being in the document prior to me even touching it is the concept that a staff member cannot get the city credit card. And I'm not projecting on you two, any malintention, I want that whole, that to be clear that none of this discussion is about current staff or current malintention. The goal is to protect the city's resources from anyone, right? So somebody can get the city card and go spend up to five hundred dollars if you put that as a cap without ever talking to you. So what this language does, it says it's subject to your approval, right? So you want to be approving everything of any amount. With muffins for a meeting to.
And I do that right now.
Okay, well, I'm just wanting to know how you want to run the order.
Right now, right now. Anytime that anybody goes to purchase something, they say, I'm gonna go to HEB and buy cookies. And then I see the invoice. And if it's a, where we had, or the receipt, if it's uh where we have actually cut a check, then there's two people that see that and which are the, the two right here. And they, they question, well, why did we spend this? And what it's for? So the, and the thing is, when you look at our audits and stuff, we have never had a non, well, like, we've never had qualified. Always been unqualified.
Our, our audits are not that granular. We're not going.
Well, no, they, they do, they pull in. They come in, they ask this, it's like, I want to see this invoice, I want to see this invoice, I want to see the check. I want to see, I actually worked clear the bank. And it could be.
Okay, receipts?
They good?
So I think the original intention of the statement is to take some of the burden off of you. And you're saying a city manager should have that full burden at all times.
Yes. Why don't we just stop after purchase of goods is subject to the manager's approval, stop?
Okay.
That's, yeah. That was it.
Okay, uh, are there?
Well, the, the only other one is. Right, and the only other one I had was about um. Contract.
Yeah, contract labor.
Yeah, contract labor.
Right. One sixty-five.
Which one is it?
Page one sixty-five. Page one sixty-five. It may be page one sixty-five, paragraph B.
Okay, so A is my, more of my concern. Uh, because, yeah, when, when it says we'll solicit three proposals, we're lucky to get, we, we solicit three or we try to find a contract. But there's a lot of times we have to only find one contract and then we'll even get them. But when you, you know, isn't it like solicit three proposals, so we just need to have record of John Doe said no, you know, and that's it. You know, or whoever was, and then we finally end up with one proposal. And like you stated about putting in a stop sign as three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Right.
Because we never could, did have. We had one person that did one time for what was a hundred and fifty.
Right.
And then they decided not to do it anymore.
I need clarification. You're talking about B to A?
Yes.
Contrast.
Uh, contract labor is. I just.
Okay. Look at B to B. I think that paragraph does not go there. Because you're saying that, I would say a report to the government body shall be required for all expenses of fifteen hundred dollars.
Well, but that's if it's pertaining to regular function, if it's not pertaining to regular function, then it makes this a part of the basic operation of the city.
And it's just a report. He says, I spent two thousand dollars to move the handicap sign from this position to this position. Hopefully, it would never cost that amount. That's just a pending project we have. And he would say, council, I did this. Council says, thank you, dear.
Right. So I don't have, I don't have a problem. That's just, I just want to make sure it's clear in my mind that when you say solicit three proposals, you might not get one.
I think.
That's a solicitor. That's good.
There's going to solicit that. You get one in your.
Well, I just, yeah, it's on record now. I just wanted to make sure that that's what I understood.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry if I missed this, but um, but like when you're dealing with your contractors, um, you know, this does, you know, you're gonna solicit three proposals for all contract work over, over three hundred dollars. Well, let's say it's like the same job that happens three times, four times, six times a year and it's generally five hundred bucks a pop.
And like mowing?
Yeah, I mean.
That's what kind of.
So there's a contract, so, so, so the contract, it's not. Um, you know, the contract is typically over a period of time. But contract work in my definition is, hey, come in and do this, then they go away.
Like, oh.
Gotcha, like, so, so is there a way to put in here or to put a, a, um, you know, the, the the, the best solution would be to have a contractor, contract labor, under, under contract, you know, for a period, you know, and for, for annual period and then have to renew every, I mean, would that be helpful? Or is it, well, I'll go big break wood now.
Because he always talked about IDI keys. Which indefinite, uh, I can't remember, indefinite, something indefinite quantity. And so what we're running into is that if you do that, you tell this contractor, I, uh, if you will put in X number of stops, I will guarantee you will be paid this much, even if I don't use it to do that. And that, so like, you know, we've never done that. That's high. I would never say I would want to do that. But, but why do, but it's just like, uh, when we were doing the stop signs, uh, and we found one person do a stop sign. He did it for a hundred and fifty dollars. Then we contacted him, uh, again, then another stop sign. He goes, no, I'm not gonna do it again, so we had to go find him. So basically, and that's just working with the way that it is now in this work world. It's, we're just gonna have. It's, we're just gonna have to, yeah, solicit, which as long as everybody understands solicit means we contacted three contractors, and got, and this hopefully got a response, we got a response. That's been a time tonight.
So the goal is just to establish a due diligence, that is, you attempted to get multiple offers for this work, what came in is what came in. Again, that language was previously in the other policies, so that's not a new concept for the city that was before. It just changed the, the cap because it was previously a little confusing that it was mentioning unbudgeted purchases, unbudgeted. So now all, you know, that's kind of changed, and now there's this three hundred dollar cap. If we need to adjust that, I think that's easy. But I did want to touch on the concept that you guys, you know, you mentioned mowing, or this idea that there, you know, is a series of projects. So it does talk about daily operations and regular maintenance. And it kind of, it gives you some examples, but some of these concerns would actually fall under that. And so basically, we recognize that there, there are certain items that we don't need to report on every time. Like if we need five stop signs replaced, we understand that we designated for you to replace all five stop signs at my varying cost, but the, the job is to get the work done. You seek your three, whatever your, you know, and, so, I mean, it's all about protecting the city and establish, establishing guidelines and due diligence. It's not necessarily, I mean, it's not binding, you know. Obviously, it just encourages a, a city manager to report to council. You know, if things steer off of this, you just give council a report.
I have a legal question there. If it's not binding, why are we doing it?
Well, look, I, I gotta, I'm gonna add on to that question.
I'd like to hear.
So under three, flat, is talks about any authorized representative of the city, uh, if they would follow these guidelines, must be considered grants for disciplinary action and/or may result in the termination of employer contract without severance, being on the severity of this comment.
That's what I'm asking.
That language was in the previous policy copied over, and I believe that any resolution and, and these policies are legally binding.
One sixty-eight.
And that we are supposed to be following them? What I meant by binding is that it, basically, if something falls outside these lines, it's not to say it can't happen or shouldn't happen, it's to say that you go to council and you address it in open meetings, because this policy is just supposed to guide your daily and regular decisions. And my understanding is a resolution and a policy, they are guidelines.
They're not law.
Right, they're not law, but this compliance was directly in the previous document passed by a previous mayor, and I believe signed off on by.
By Peter and.
John Stone and Michael T. Steinhardt. And it was provided by the Borches Law Firm, who we generally reference as State of Legal Council. They provided trainings for the city several times recently. Large amounts of money were paid by the previous mayor and council for it.
So, I mean, what are you afraid of? I mean, if you don't follow the guidelines? I mean, are you concerned by not following them?
No, I'm not concerned by following them, I just, you know, it's just like, you know, the, it's, uh, I'm gonna follow the guidelines though, you know, I don't mind that, I've been following them anyway. It's not that hard to deal with. I do try to keep a high share. It's just, you know, now, I'm gonna go back to any councilor, remember, risen by her question to, to the attorney. Because sometimes that's what people do with policy.
Brevity is the soul of what I suppose. Now, I mean, that's it. I mean, not, not everything that, that a city or, or an entity does is. Yeah, it, it, it's, it's not all law. Sometimes things are expressed through what we call the living street, precatory, or wishing words. They're aspirational statements of, of what we seek to aspire to, or what we would like to see followed. Uh, and that's, you know, that's really what a resolution is. Let's, let's try and work through this, right?
Mary Ann?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm cutting outside my expertise here, but in all my research, my understanding of why we sometimes do things by resolution versus passing it into law is that a procurement policy might be more subject to change and, and needs to have more adaptability. And so you're not paying that two hundred fifty dollar qualification fee and all those public notices every time you're essentially, you're saying, "This is our policy, we're going to abide by it. We all sign this contract, we agree", but by doing it in a resolution, it allows for more flexibility down the line to alter it easier.
Real, real procurement is covered by Texas law and the law. I mean, this is, this is the, 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 the small potato spending. Any real big important spending that a city does is, is, it's covered by state procurement laws.
Yeah.
This, this provides flexibility.
I do have a good question, two good questions. Uh, and I hate to go back to one sixty-five, B two. On contract labor, if we set up B that reported the governing bodies should be required for all expenditures over fifteen hundred, should we just say the city will solicit three proposals for all contract work, period? Why do we have a, you know, yes?
Um, it's, it's a recording process. Basically, currently, um, the mayor and our city manager may spend a significant amount of money without it ever being run by the governing body unless it is unbudgeted. So if it's under a budget by item.
I, I understand, but I was just saying, you have, we have a number up, just say, require this.
So the other, the three hundred is the cap for just requiring multiple proposals. Then you have this line of fifteen hundred, basically saying, "Now you need to tell council you spent those large sum of money", and the council may, it may be subject to approval, meaning, um, it says expenditures over fifteen hundred may be subject to approval by the governing body. So if it's something that the city manager is concerned the governing body might not approve of, then maybe he would present it in advance, give some sort of, you know, and that falls on the mayor to manage the city in the same way. I believe your spending cap by law, you said was about ten thousand dollars, right?
Well, by study laws, forty-nine thousand.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Right, so under a budget.
About that study law. It's getting.
So one quick question. Okay, this is, sometimes I pick on little things. You're talking about daily operations and managers, and you have some example. Let's say, uh, you need an electrician, you need a plumber, it is an emergency. So, and the daily operations and regular maintenance, you don't know until that electrician crosses the threshold, what's gonna cost you? How do you know where an emergency situation?
Well, but the, I, when I, way I read it. It says, "All expenditures not, uh, over fifteen hundred dollars not pertaining, not pertaining to regular function, those maintenance", it's like, like we have a leaky faucet out here right now.
Okay, so do you want to have a, should we say something?
I would assume that's daily maintenance is trying to keep you out.
That's the daily maintenance.
Yeah, to make sure that the, that the facilities are maintained.
That would be under a page.
Again, it's not saying he can't do it, it's just saying he provides a report, a line bus, he has spent two grand, two month, you know, that, okay.
Yeah.
Month report, he says, "Hey, I spent two thousand dollars, we had a line bus", and it's just a way of creating accountability.
Okay, so that will be, where we leave, you're saying that will be on the, uh, page one sixty-six, paragraph C, daily operations and regular maintenance?
Yeah.
Okay, you have listed there, uh, janitorial service, fire, hotel, cost of utility, this right here, and now, and list, how about, you, you're listing some examples. So, you know, there's also a line budget item for emergency.
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's, there's the fifty thousand for.
Okay, and maybe you can say some examples into personnel, and for, uh, emergency service or something like that. Okay, okay, just, just that, I'm home.
Okay, so, um, so we have a policy where you suggested amendments.
There's two small ones. I think we could report unless there's anything else.
Move those amendments.
I would like to suggest that we amend the motion to include the changes, the edits I provided by council. Being on C1, strike after city manager approval, remove the rest of that sentence. On P, oh, sorry, I need to go back. So, excuse me, it is under, letter C, number one, purchase of goods. The next amendment occurs under, number two, contract labor. Letter C, daily operations and regular maintenance. Lowercase letter A, add emergency services.
We have a C here and a D here.
Yeah, there's a typo. We just noticed, um, uh, so on number two, contract labor, it says C, and then C again. So there's some minor editing that needs to occur in the, I forget the name of this. What is the, what are your, no, the, um, what do you call it, or you do the C ones, no, the season ones.
Formatting?
Formatting, but there's a word for it. The structure of the document, but, yeah, it's like number one, A, B, C, the full of A. There's some minor edits in that as well, that I will fix the document and provide staff with these edits for y'all to ask.
I second the amendment.
Second the amendment. All right, thank you, let's, let's.
So we're voting on the amendments, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So, Councilmember Brent Polley.
Aye.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Judy Brezending.
Aye.
Mayor Protem O'Barra-Labron.
Aye.
All right, so that, uh, the amendment passes, we will vote on the main motion as amended.
Councilmember Deborah Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Chris Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Judy Brezending.
Aye.
Protem, Mayor Protem, O'Barra-Labron.
Aye.
Councilmember Brent Polley.
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number eleven, discussing the appropriate action on the resolution of the city of Woodbury. Texas update the city's fund balance policy.
Move it, and move it written and stated.
Seconded by Councilmember Polley. And.
Uh, so again, the goal was to make this digital and place it on the offensive public. This is step one, and following through with that process. Um, additionally, we wanted to update the policy to make it more applicable to the city. When I sat down with the city manager and councilmember Grummer, it was established that much of this document was essentially irrelevant for us in the way our city operates. Additionally, Mr. Lewis stated that much of this is actually just governed by Gaffer, which is a tax, N D gas board. And so we could simply point to that entity and head. However, I thought it was desirable to have a more direct and clear policy in writing for the city, not to simply point at this gent's material because the average citizen might not invest the time needed to understand or not eat the access to these materials. So essentially, this document is a distillation of that information from the Gaffer tax, from the gas board website. It is designed to be informative and guide policy and decisions. Having a strategic long-term approach to finance and it being written clearly so all can understand is essential for public finance and for the operation of our city. Um, there's an objective portion of the document, I'm not going to review all, uh, second grade teachers, but, um, that establishes essentially the objectives of the document, and then it goes into defining some essential terms for the, the city that are relevant to our city. Again, all of this is pulled directly from the gas board and Gaffer tax. I did not personally invent any of this. All I did was edit it into a simplified document for the public to understand. Um, you also see the copy of the previous document, so much of this is also just an incorporation of that previously existing document, but eliminating the aspects that, um, we discussed in that meeting that essentially differed in our city.
Right. There was one thing, I, I had a, a question on this, um, actually down here on the floor. Under the comprehensive fund balance policies, um, number four is on page, uh, one seventy-seven. We're talking about, uh, the city shall always reserve no less than two months of operating costs in the general fund balance. Um, so the math on that, you know, we, we've had several discussions over the last few years about keeping, you know, sort of a minimum of five hundred thousand dollars, um, in reserve, uh, in order to, to, you know, to sort of make it more attractive, um, for bond ratings and stuff. So five hundred thousand dollars would be the, the sort of the floor. Um, and then two months of operating cost doesn't equal five hundred thousand dollars. It would be more like three months or, uh, even four, or just a state. Yeah, and if five hundred thousand dollars is, is sort of fluid in that it's, in that it's like a fortune of our, of our reserve. What is the five hundred, I mean, the accountants keep saying, you know, keep five hundred thousand dollars in there, but you need, you need that, you know, if you're ever gonna, for getting rid of it.
And the reason behind that is, is because, uh, you go to a lot of, uh, full service stuff, and they, they have the ability to generate more revenues, water rates, electric rates, gas rates, whatever, but we are limited to our taxes and our franchisees. And our financial advisor say, "Keep a half million in reserves, just for bonding and anything else. Don't ever follow that."
But is, but is the half a million, um, attached to something bigger, to like a, you know, a third of this or a half of that?
No, they're just saying arbitrary.
They, they just said, "Keep the half million in there to show that the city is just responsible by at least maintaining a half million dollars." So in this, in this number four, on page one seventy-seven, where it says additionally, "The city shall always reserve no less than two months of operating costs in the general fund balance", is that different than that number?
Oh, yes, uh, I was looking at the budget right now.
Uh, no, I, I don't mean that it's totally different. I mean, is that, if you change, if it said five hundred, if it said half a million dollars instead of no less than two months operating cost, is that the same thing?
Uh, I, I would be a lot, uh, feel better about it if it said half a million dollars in reserves.
Okay, so, sorry, man. Okay, so there's two different things going on here, and again, these are just recommendations from these texts in this board. They're baseline recommendations. We can always get them strict. So please know that I am not arguing with you stick with the baseline. I like things strict. But, um, so you have your general fund balance, that's all your money, right? And so our, even our own accountants has said, "Never spend more than half of that one single year", right? And they didn't, in that conversation, they didn't even necessarily say a number. He just said, "Don't spend more than half your money in one year, period." So you've got that component, and the committed fund balance essentially is a fancy way of saying our budget. So we're never gonna allocate more than half of our money off our year, our budget in one year, you know, beyond our revenue, essentially. So then it says, basically, your, your minimum that they recommend is that in the event of an emergency, your city can run for two months without any thing. So these are just the minimums. So when you're talking about interjecting half a million, I just want to know where you want it. Are you wanting it under, at any given point in time, we have to have half a million in our reserves? Because that's pretty limiting. Or are you wanting it to say that it is recommended the city maintain one half million in the general fund balance at any time? In a year?
I like that one.
What's that?
That, that will, that will basically say they are also in reserve, but the difference is that your, your general fund balance doesn't have to be accessible all the time. So your general fund balance also includes your investments.
Right.
So by saying you have to have half a million dollars in reserves at any point in time, we essentially would have to pull out all of our, that's.
It counts, it counts.
Because your reserves, but the deal is, your reserves, what they're saying here is essentially you have to have two months accessible in your, your accessible reserves, which is a little bit different. So I'm just wondering where you want the half million.
But I just want, you know, just so it's there that says, "There will shall be, uh, a minimum of a half billion dollars". a minimum of a half billion dollars.
In the general fund balance. In any fiscal year.
Uh, Councilmember Brezendine.
What if it was worried where we can't all be low? A half a million at any given point in time in our humility.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
So it says no less than two months of operating cost. It just says no less than five hundred thousand dollars.
Because the way this city operates, most of our income is generated at the beginning of the year. And there could be a point in time that we're spending more than is coming in in our, in our general budget and our general funds. So I think that if we never allow it to fall below that is a little different perspective in my mind from a financial standpoint than saying we need to maintain.
Okay.
Because maybe it's time when maintaining is not as easy. You'll see what I'm saying because of the difference in expenditures and income.
From the last minute, you're saying additionally, the city.
Now, we can edit that out. We can, we can not edit it, but yeah. Sorry.
I love Woodbury. Okay. Additionally, the city shall always reserve a minimum of a half a million dollars in the general fund balance.
And that will.
Shall not fall below. Shall not fall below.
Go ahead.
One seventy-five, general financial goals. When you say general fund, and it may be just me. He said, maintain significantly adequate reserves, the contributor reserves. How about maintain significant adequate funds?
Okay, I am a little behind. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm so.
We're short paying this from the whole.
I'm just saying to, if they have a difference between page one seventy-five, the reserves, the contributor reserves, which for us is to maintain the contributor adequate funds to cover blah, blah, blah.
Okay, so.
Oh, so you're talking about under general financial goals, number one, general fund, maintain significant and adequate funds.
Okay.
Pick up basic up instead of reserves.
There's no confusion with reserve.
That's easy enough. Yeah. That's not.
I have one other question. Under number three, policy for the creation and use of an unrestricted fund balance. Where it says the city may, may maintain no more than fifty thousand in the unrestricted fund balance. We have a restricted fund balance of four hundred thousand for our road on Woodbury Drive with the designated restricted fund. So this is really limiting if we are going to start working on roads.
Well, I, I like this because I basically let me go off that too. If you look, go back to our financials. And you go up to page. Okay, you go to page four. You can see we have basically. Let's see here. Sorry. So we, under one thousand eight point four, that's restricted. The PEG funds, one thousand ten point two are restricted, and what they can be used for.
And if we apply for grants, they will have to be restricted funds too.
donations. It's there. You have that on there. You have that on the, in the conversation.
Yeah.
Page one seventy-eight, you mentioned, page one seventy-eight, you have a D, basically restricted revenue fund. You have that in there.
Yeah, so I just want to point a clarification because Councilmember Brezendine is talking about number three where it says policy for the creation and use of an unrestricted fund balance. But you guys keep referencing restricted funds. So I'm a little confused because these two things don't seem to align.
Unrestricted funds are basically emergency fund.
Yeah.
And, and we keep, we have.
So this is.
That's what, that's, that's.
That's for, yeah. It is for emergency. It's a standard accounting practice.
It's non-restricted. It's not, the restricted, there's no limit on the amount of restricted funds.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that your daughter?
Do you read the backslows?
Where?
So again.
Did you get your piece on? Oh.
What?
Pretty good thing.
Um, so that, that that is the standard accounting policy is because at certain times stuff comes up. I mean, it even tells you it's an emergency reserve fund in the case of a natural disaster. Volatile revenue sources or uncertainty, market trend. Essentially, if the city was scrambling to cover regular bills, there's the fund that they can draw from. In our procurement policy, it says, but the council has to approve that. You can't just dip into those monies and use them for whatever.
But. You've got to give her the piece.
Okay, yes.
And then there is a special restricted revenue fund. So it does acknowledge that under fund balance classifications, these are things our city does use. So we have our general fund balance. That's our regular budget. We have our capital improvements projects fund. So our team manager already sets those aside. We have our debt service funds. We talk about those in our INS when we do our budget process. We have our special restricted revenue fund. These are things that can only be used for the projects for which they were designated. You talked about what those, and then there's the net fund balance. And this is basically everything combined. And minus expenditures essentially. So, I mean, it's a pretty straightforward document. I, I'm ready to issue the amendments and the edits needed if y'all are. All right, so.
All right.
Okay, I would like to motion that we approve this document with the following amendments. On number one, under the general finance goals, we will change the word reserves to funds. And on number four, the comprehensive fund balance, we will adjust the language of the last minutes to say, shall not all be below half a million. And I will adjust this document and just stop to help them.
I second. All right, we'll sort on the amendment. Amendments.
Mayor Proton Lebrun.
Aye.
Councilmember Grummer. Councilmember Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Brezendine.
Aye.
And Councilmember Paul.
Hi.
Hi, great. Thank you very much.
All right, item number twelve. Oh, I'm sorry. Getting a little space. Yes, and now we'll vote on the main motion as amended.
Okay, Councilmember Pauline.
Aye.
Councilmember Hines.
Aye.
Councilmember Grummer.
Aye.
Councilmember Brezendine.
Aye.
And Mayor Proton Lebrun.
Aye.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry about that. Okay, number twelve, discuss take appropriate action on establishing a sixty-five years or older for disabled tax exemption for the city of Woodbury, Texas. Councilmember Grummer, will it's written?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Hines.
Mayor, we are, please, please. And this, this idea was also brought to our attention by a citizen. And given the council's support on this possibility, at the last meeting, I've included more information for council to consider. On page one eighty of the packet, it shows the current tax rates and exemptions in Hayes County. I'm going to just kind of walk slowly so that everyone can get to the documents. On page one eighty-one, it shows the current rate established by council set at point two zero seven one per one hundred valuation property. Let's just the, the orders I'm just presenting to. Beginning on page one eighty-four in the packet is the application for property owners to apply for the tax exemption. On it, you'll see that the sixty-five year older tax able tax exemptions are listed on this form. Page one eighty-seven of the packet is an important chart for us to consider regarding the impact of section exemption. The possible impact to the property owner as well as the possibility of an impact for the city.
I'm scrolling myself. You know, one of the things that I, I noticed with this and just sort of looking at the number, the minimum of three thousand dollars. Maximum would be thirty thousand dollars of the textual valuation. And if I did my math right, doesn't that push, like if you're talking about twenty percent as was requested by, by one of the, one of our, our residents? That's, doesn't twenty, doesn't twenty percent push it over the thirty thousand dollars?
So in order to collect, to to get to the twenty percent is our, is Texas law states as the maximum.
Right.
So what we utilize is a low valuation. So just in case there is a property that we used a hundred and fifty thousand as a property, like that's your lowest property. So we use that as a calculation for the twenty percent. So that's how it goes to thirty thousand.
So basically, to do this, whatever the city set, it's equally applied to all homes. So you look at your lowest value home. We say, what's twenty percent of that? Twenty percent of, you know, would be thirty thousand dollars off a home value down there. So that's the maximum the city could credit off is thirty thousand dollars. If our lowest value home was a hundred and fifty thousand. Now, if our lowest value home was half a million dollars, then that, that number would drastically change. Where I pulled that hundred and fifty thousand dollars is because we had a home listed for that amount on Deerfield fairly recently. But I said, we can generally assume essentially our lowest value home would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to set that maximum for us.
So the, the, that's what that chart shows is that, is Texas law states three thousand has to be the minimum if you create this exemption. And the maximum has to be twenty percent.
Yeah, you can't, you can't give them more value off the home than twenty percent of the value. So the dollar amount of that conservatively would be a thirty thousand dollar total.
Now, if I'm reading this right, if we gave a thirty thousand dollar exemption to someone sixty-five or old or handicapped, they would be saving sixty-two dollars and thirteen cents a year.
On a home value that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, depending on the value of your home, your, your tax rate fluctuates. So sixty, they get sixty bucks off, which they could apply to a utility bill or whatever. The city, the impact on the city is really easy to calculate. And it's static. So the city could really plan for a budget for this if they want to move forward with it. The, the residents, the home value, they take it out. The more valuable your home is, the more you get off. This impact on the city, however, is directly tied to the amount of homes owned by sixty-five year or older residents or disabled residents. If we use our basic population projections that assume forty percent of our residents are sixty-five year old, and every single one of those residents owned a home here. For forty percent of our eight hundred non-appartement homes, which is even a larger number. The numbers are very conservative, meaning if we estimated worst case scenario for the city's impact on its budget, it's not likely to hit those totals because first off, how many homes do we have? Do we actually have eight hundred houses, non-appartments? And then it's forty percent of those individually owned by sixty-five years and older. But these are, you know.
Can I ask a question? Because, okay, then, my, my mind's, you know, it's getting more. That's okay, because I already talked about this earlier one morning. When you say homeowner, are you saying homeowner that is the resident there or a homeowner that has five homes in town?
It's a homestead exemption.
Okay, because, okay, that, just want to make sure.
It's a homestead.
It makes sure, not just saying homeowner, it's homestead.
So they also have to be.
Okay, that's what, just want to make sure if I understand.
Right.
It has to be a homestead.
Yes. That's why the form is on there. It's a homestead.
Yeah, right.
So in, in real world numbers, because I was trying to do the math on it. And I, I use a different, I mean, I said, okay, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. You know, if you get a, a twenty percent off the top of that, it's like seventy K, right?
We, we can't do that. We're setting a static number. We're, we're setting for the whole city.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, if, if you did it, I'm, I'm saying with the figure that I did.
Oh.
Just, no, I took my home and what my tax appraisal was and said, okay, if I could take twenty percent of that appraisal off the top, that's about seventy K. And that's, and that's how the homestead exemption works.
Okay. The, the lowest valued home here would have to be three hundred and fifty thousand.
The lowest.
Does that make sense?
I got that question for you. I'd like to hear your answer.
Okay. So what it is, this, so let's say you have a five hundred thousand dollar home and I have a one hundred thousand dollar home. And the city creates an exemption. They have to, as the top twenty percent, they have to give, they can't go past mine, right? The lowest value. So the twenty percent is based on the lowest value of the property in the entire city. That's because it's a ceiling. It's not the bottom.
Okay, they take twenty percent.
Thirty percent would be the max. We're using a valuation of a hundred. So we can't, he gets thirty thousand off, I get thirty thousand off, he gets, you know.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So if, if.
Take the same amount. Uh, it's not a percentage.
Look at page one eighty-eight. It's a proposal. It's an example tax bill, and it shows exactly where this is already happening by your tax bill.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, where the city would input their numbers. So essentially, the city can say, okay, we give everybody three thousand dollars off. Or the city could say, we're going to give everybody ten thousand dollars off or twenty thousand dollars off. But according to our current values and estimate, the max we could do safely is thirty thousand. Off on that line item because in theory, you can only give twenty percent off your lowest valued home.
So you, so what you're, what you're recommending is thirty percent, an exemption. Because that's how the IRS does it.
So look at, it's one eighty-seven again.
I, I get it now because your tax bill looks exactly like mine.
Yeah, that's.
Regardless of, when you go down the exemption list, it's still the same five thousand, eight thousand, point eight thousand. If you apply, if you go apply for them.
Right, that's quite so easy to calculate for the city.
Okay, yeah. So I got a question.
Okay, so I'm looking at the chart and it says thirty thousand. And with that, that save about sixty-two dollars. Right? Per home. And when you say forty percent of the homes are over sixty-five, I'm coming up with twenty thousand dollars, eight hundred, twenty-five, but eight hundred dollars.
So.
That, that is, that, we would be losing. So we'd lose twenty grand.
They're showing that on their example.
So if you look at this next chart, and we can double check the math here together if you mean. But essentially, if the proposed exemption is twenty thousand dollars. And we're saying forty percent of our homes get that, that's, and there's eight hundred homes, right? We could talk about the actual numbers in a second. But so forty percent of eight hundred is three hundred and twenty homes. You times that number, twenty thousand, by three hundred and twenty homes, that gives you the total amount reduced for the value of the city. That's a six million dollar reduction for the city, six million four hundred thousand. Then if you take that and divide it by a hundred and multiply it by your tax rate, that gives you the number that we actually financially lose. So we can take that math real quick and check it. So twenty thousand dollars by three hundred and twenty equals the six million four hundred thousand. Then I divide that by a hundred. That gives me sixty-four thousand dollars. And I multiply that by our tax rate of point two zero seven one. It produces thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty cents.
Right.
Off of our income total.
Right, and so then, and this, you know, this is going to be assessed through the budget because it depends on how, when, because all the values come in.
No, because it's a flat rate.
Well, I know, but what I'm saying, what I'm saying, you know, I'll turn sixty-five, we're doing so. But, but, yeah. Yeah, but the thing is, is that then, if you're saying that the reduction in home values, uh, let's see here, total impacted reduction. Okay, are you saying that's total reduction of thirteen thousand or thirteen thousand in revenue?
That is, so it is, so the, it's a flat reduction, meaning you, you only have three hundred and twenty homes. That could, this could be applied to, and they only get twenty thousand dollars off, right? And these are conservative numbers. It's actually much lower than this. That then is multiplied by your tax rate and that's how you get that last number. So that's $13,000 off the adhorum revenue coming in. And the reason why it's predictable is because it's a flat rate and home number rate.
Okay, so my question, okay, what was rate 0.2071? 0.2071, so, so that is, okay, so that would also become off the debt side. Because that's the rate 0.2071 is also the debt.
Yeah, so that is just, so the adhorum value is impacted and would impact the overall tax rate. And this is the current tax rate, we would actually have to look at the next years, because our projected adhorum increase is up to $309 million. So then you look at the known revenue, so that those rates, the actual impact for the next budget will change.
Sure.
But yes, it, it changes your adhorum value in general, because it's a homestead exemption. It operates just like your other homestead exemption, which changes your total taxable adhorum rate.
Okay, but the question is then is, I don't know, it's getting late. But the question is that the school issued debt, so they, and you get the homestead exemption off of the M and up?
They apply a portion of their tax rate to the exemption, is what you're saying?
What?
A portion, so look at the tax, because it all has to be documented.
Right.
Under your Wimberly ISB, you get a $25,000 in your reduction of your total home value. And then it gives you the taxable value of your home for the school district.
Sure.
I mean, that's pretty clear.
Okay, but, okay, back to my original question. So if, if you're saying that 13,254, the total impact reduction of adhorum money?
And that would be with a $20,000?
Right, so basically you're saying that if we're going, basically the revenue stream goes from $349,000 down to $336,000.
Yeah, if you look, sorry, if you look at our current budget expenditures, that's 1.55% decrease. Less than a 2% decrease in our overall general expenditures projected for the budget.
I have a question. Because we have 7.8 cents of our debt, I mean of our income, tax and income admitted to paying off our tax notes, can we pledge to reduce this? I mean, what will that do to?
What, it's, you can't reduce, no. If, if the reduction will only take effect once taxes put through the obligation, the obligation then.
So the reduction will not take effect for this, that proposal is for the reduction of the debt. They pay for the 2021 taxable.
Subsection I of 11.13, I'll show them restructured. Assessor applied for tax even to disregard exemptions authorized by the subsections and collected tax fledge for payment of the debt without deducting the amount of the exemption. If prior to passing the exemption, the unit fledge, so, so on, so. So what you're saying is for the bonds that we already have currently, this part, this exemption wouldn't apply to that, but it would apply to the, with your debt.
What I'm saying, what I'm, I have to read this, but I'm saying it would not apply to the debt. And we will have to generate the 8 cents. And, and because when you look at the budget, you know, we had the $349,000 for M and up. But then on the other side, we have the debts, we're actually collecting over half of the $8.
You all confuse me, I'm sorry.
We, we need to have Jennifer talk.
I think that'd be.
My understanding is that this, what happens with these things, because we are not the first city to do this. In fact, the first chart is about a bunch of cities that are already with this. And some of them already have bonds and notes and things like that. So my understanding, and I won't pretend I'm an expert here, is that essentially if a city decides to pass this by July 1st, the Hayes County Tax Appraisal District gathers all of that information and that's how they give you your new rate, your new revenue rate, all of that. And so they would apply any reductions that this would cause in those new rates they give the city to be able to approve. So all of this would be accounted for. And if there's a breakdown in, in our debt service, that would show up on the tax bill that I have not seen that before. So I believe it just adjusts in the tax rates. They would just, and already they told us that our INS rate would be going down unless we chose to take out more debt. We would actually be raising it back up to 7.8 essentially.
So what is the point in giving over 65 a deduction if we have to go up on our rate? As we're looking at going into looking at bonds? I, I don't understand the logic behind this.
I follow it, but there's. Let me ask, make to ask you a question. I want to be absolutely clear. If we, we can do, we're saying here, we want to do a $20,000 exemption effective for the 2021 tax year. 2022 tax year.
You submit it by July 1st and then it applies for the next year.
Right.
Okay, and then we can do that even with the pending tax note. But it would affect if we, if we were to have a bond election in three days? Based on what he read?
Right. I, well, I like Buzz, the three terms suggestion is to give this to Jennifer and just say, this is what we're planning on. Possibly what we could do.
Oh, Jennifer's kind.
And, and basically, and because we've already got preliminary evaluations, everything else, like how does it affect us? And what would the loss affect? Okay, so can I ask? That's why we're hiring council member and city manager Lewis to make that call in the next couple of days and get a little bit more clarification, just, you know, because we can bring this back up. Yeah, today.
Right, I mean, the, the, today was just a discussion, there's no ordinance to pass in the first place. I move that we.
I think it'd be just the mayor's correction.
I brought it though, as council.
I mean, then everybody gets to say whether or not they support moving forward with it at all. So I move that we submit this information to Jennifer O'Kane, right is her name? And have a report generated from her to present back to council on the impact this would have on our tax rate.
Or impact on revenues.
Does this go?
Overall revenue.
And tax rate.
I mean, that's what I was kind of figuring out when I was doing my math. You know, what's it going to cost the city, you know, to do that?
Can I, can I say tax rate and overall revenue? Because council member Brezene is asking about the tax rate in particular, because that, that is important.
I, I can second that. Does this go to Jennifer O'Kane or does it go to the assessor?
She will, she will be, the assessor has talked, will provide, sorry to provide this with the preliminary.
Because when I apply for my exemption, I apply to the assessor. And then the assessor notifies O'Kane, I'm trying to think of O'Kane, this person now has this exemption. And, and she sets the rate, she gets the that.
Well, we'll go to Jennifer and find out and then let her go through the process if she needs to go to the assessor.
I think, I think that, I just want to make sure we could say that submit to.
The appropriate parties.
What is the, Nigel, please?
Next county tax assessor, she both, yeah.
So, and then for her to advise us of.
I, I just to be clear, I, I don't think that we can issue a command performance to Jennifer and she's going to make an issue report. Preserving expectations, I think at the very least, she would be willing to have a call and ask Russian for this.
Yeah, and, and they are right now in a dangerous land of debt. But I think, I, I think we, okay, I, I second.
I would like to make an amendment.
Everybody, got it? Yeah, you got that, please.
The amendment is asking council, do they wish to narrow these, this question? And right now we have a range of 3 to 30. We, we would be beneficial to narrow it down to something where entertaining, so that Jennifer doesn't have to do this whole thing.
Isn't, isn't the only question the impact of subsection I of 1113 on what's being proposed? In other words, what?
Or unnecessary.
I mean, yeah, the, the.
No, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, but, but whatever it is, take, take that, take that amount, plug it in and then she, she can tell us what the impact is and then we could.
Adjust from there.
So, so you say, for example, Jennifer, we're proposing a $20,000 exemption.
I would like to make the motion that we set the amount at $20,000 is the most, right? Or we could go to 30, but I don't think that's safe. But $20,000 is a great amount if we can give that a significant.
I second.
All right.
Okay, the motions we got.
One amendment, one amendment.
Okay, so we'll vote on the amendment to set the.
Hypothetical amount.
Hypothetical, I was saying hypothetical amount at $20,000. And extend and offset exemption for 65 and older and disabled. So that's the amendment that we're taking.
Would you entertain a friendly amendment?
Resistant.
Demand the amendment?
No, the question is, you're saying.
Would you like them to reread the motion?
Please. I'm sorry.
I thought that the amendment, you wanted to set, you wanted to set a $20,000 static amount or hypothetical amount on the 65 and older exemption for the city of Oak Creek tax.
The motion is to ask staff to contact Jennifer O'Kane for a reporter discussion on the impact of tax rates and revenue for a hypothetical homestead exemption, city-based homestead exemption for $20,000 for 65 and older and disabled.
Yes, so that's, that's, the entire motion is amended.
Yeah, we haven't voted on it.
Yeah, yes, so.
So we'll, we'll call the roll on the amendment, setting the $20,000 hypothetical rate.
All right, council member Deborah Hines? Council member Chris Grummer? Council member G. Brezene? Mayor Protimor Royal Brown? I have an amendment. Council member Brett Colley?
All right, so the motion, or the amendment passes four eyes, one dang. But approach on the main motion, as amended.
Need to submit the information to Jennifer O'Kane and have a report generated regarding the impact on revenue and tax rate for home exempt residents over the age of 60 and disabled third.
Disabled, disabled, disabled.
Hope disabled.
Disabled, not bad.
Can you please save questions for the disabled?
Person with disabilities.
Form. No, that's the form.
Get to the stat, the statute.
So.
So I see disabled, the person.
Disabled.
Whatever stated in the statute.
Okay. With that, see, we're telling them. Colin Crowe, G. Brezene?
Aye.
Chris Grummer?
Aye.
Deborah Hines, I'm sorry, council member Deborah Hines, council member Brett Colley?
Aye.
Mayor Protimor Royal Brown, aye. Sorry, everybody. It's just me.
All right, like that now, two more, I think we've been.
Mayor Hines, I'd like to remove item 13. We've already taken care of this business and it's, it's clearly.
Great, so the final, I hope, yeah. Final within the item, discussion to take possible action on nominations to city boards, divisions and our committees. I would entertain a motion to place Dorothy Tasien as regular member on the tree board.
I move that we follow the mayor's request.
I'm sorry, how you spell that?
It's T.A.S.I.A.N. She and her husband Derry are, well, they're on Brookmeadow and very, um, kind of a bunch of me, they're, they're very involved and interested in, I gave that, I guess, and said they wanted to adopt the as a tree board, so I asked her, she said, yeah, I'd love to do that. So instead of Dorothy, I have one more.
The council wants to vote to accept her.
Yeah, we're just going to do a quick one right now. Dorothy Tasien as the regular member. That will fill the board.
That was the tree board?
Of the tree board, for the, of regular members.
The tree board? Okay, go ahead.
Next, there's no document.
Karen Duncan was on the list for possible on the tree board. I talked to her and she said, we'd already banned her for the ordinance review committee. And she said, no, probably one, no. And I said, well, if we need to tap you as an author, I can come back and talk to you again. But, so Karen Duncan was taken off the list of the tree board. So Dorothy Tasien will fill that position as the regular member and that will give us the five road members.
Are they ready?
Please.
All right. Council member Brett, Brett Colley?
Aye.
Council member Deborah Hines?
Aye.
Council member Chris Grummer?
Aye.
Council member G. Brezene?
Sure.
Mayor Protimor Royal Brown?
You, you, I'm sorry, I don't have, I'm just looking here, I'm stopped at 13. I guess, let me see.
So, yeah, voting, you're, winning your vote on Dorothy Tasien for the regular member of the tree board.
I just, I don't have it on the, it won't come up on the screen, so.
What's your?
Aye.
That passes it. I have also a nomination for an alternate for the tree board, Nan, Nan Simpson, if I can get a question on that.
So move. I second, I, council member Grummer. Good to everybody, this Nan, her international reputation as a landscape architect and longtime resident, and she volunteered to serve as alternate on the tree board.
Council member Chris Grummer?
Aye.
Council member G. Brezene?
Aye.
Mayor Protimor Royal Brown?
Aye.
Aye.
Council member Deborah Hines?
Aye.